Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And welcome to the January 6th, 2021 Meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're delighted to have each of you with us this evening. At this time, I would ask that Ms. LaMagna review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas and all exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted in the lobby. Persons may visit City Hall during a public meeting to make public comments, subject to these city procedures and compliance with all recommendations from the CDC to minimize the spread of COVID-19. The commission chambers will be closed for in-person attendance by the public. The City Hall lobby will be equipped with a lectern and a microphone for public comments and an audio/video feed to the commission chambers. Yellow forms will be provided for persons who wish to make a public comment before the commission. Persons who wish to make a public -- persons may enter the lobby to speak on an item before the city commission when called upon for two and a half minutes. The lobby will also have a limited defined area with social distancing for persons waiting to make public comment. In addition, the exterior entryway into City Hall will be equipped with a loudspeaker for those waiting for permission to enter to make public comment due to space limitations in the lobby. You can also monitor public meetings from your iPhone, iPad, or other electronic device on the city's website and enter City Hall for public comment at appropriate times. All persons must comply with social distancing requirements while at City Hall, such as by remaining at least six feet apart, and use of a facial mask is mandated to combat the spread of COVID-19. Item number seven is your opportunity to address the city commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items that you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. Agenda items under item number nine are public hearings, and citizens may speak at the designated time. All citizens completing a yellow form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach a lectern, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The two-and-a-half-minute clock on the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time; you will be told when your time has expired. Item number 13 is the public comment form, and it will convene after the adjournment of the business meeting. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue that is not on the business meeting agenda. All citizens completing a green form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach a lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the city commission. Article 2, Section 6 of the court of ordinances reads as follows: It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the city commission, or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting. Order refuses obeying the ruling of the presiding officer or such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Ms. LaMagna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Cantu?
Here.
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Traeger?
Here.
Commissioner Delgado?
Here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Here.
We will now move on to item number four with the approval of the minutes of the November 18, 2020 Regular City Commission Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We'll take a motion from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner Delgado. If there are no questions, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. At this time, our city manager will address our agenda and any changes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we will need to pull item 8K Waste Pro Contract Acceptance from the Agenda. Also, add item 8N Allocation Bike Week Sponsorship Funds to the Consent Agenda. Pull item number 9D, Daytona Beach VA Plan Development, and add $1,000 to the Midtown Community Development Corporation for the Bike Week funds of Commissioner Reed. And pull item 10A and 10B from the agenda tonight.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We'll take a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner May. There are no additional questions or comments. All those who are in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Okay. We'll now move on to item number six, which is our presentations. Item number 6A is a presentation on the DART Drug Abuse Response Team.
Drew Driscoll, deputy city manager and fire chief. And along with me is Travis Anderson, our community paramedic and officer. Can you come up? Last February, we introduced the city's first phase of our community health initiative, which was community paramedicine. To refamiliarize everyone, community paramedicine is Travis, our community paramedic and nurse, making house calls to our elderly and underserved population. This launched immediately in February, and we found immediate results, better than I anticipated: a reduction in hospital readmissions, a reduction in 911 calls, and our citizens getting the services they need, as Travis helps them navigate the system. Unfortunately, with COVID, we had to pivot, and we turned to telehealth to not abandon our clients. Through telehealth, Travis was able to continue on the good efforts. We've brought food to people, wheelchairs to people, we've relocated people into permanent services. It's been a great success. I'd say the positive outcomes have given us a gold star for our Quality of Life Report Card. But now it is time to turn on Phase Two. Phase Two of our community health initiative is titled DART. It is our Drug Abuse Response Team. And the DART program is a collaboration between Fire Department, Police Department, Stewart Marchman, and our local faith community. I'll allow Travis to speak. I wanted them in attendance also because this is not a Fire Department function; this is a collaborative effort between all of us. But before Travis speaks, we did speak about, in the future, budgeting, as budget talks begin, budgeting for additional nurse. As we go through our opioid lawsuit settlement, whenever that may fall, this is a qualifying expense. The DART program qualifies for an expenditure under that settlement agreement. But otherwise, I'd like to introduce Travis Anderson.
Hey, good evening. My name's Travis Anderson. I am the community paramedic and officer with the Daytona Beach Fire Department. Like Chief Driscoll was saying, Phase Two was to include a drug abuse response team. It's known as a quick-response team, according to the state of Florida's opioid task force. Believe it, might also be the first one in the state that's done with paramedics or nurses, law enforcement, mental health agencies, and faith leadership. We started putting this together in November. I met with both chiefs here, and Nicole Sharbonne from Stewart Marchman, and a couple other faith leaders, and we started talking about how we can do this. We started looking into things. And as things started to develop, we started finding that there is a great need in the community, and basically started to try to put this together. And successfully, with the help of both the chiefs here, Stewart Marchman, the faith leadership, we're planning to launch this next week. We want to go out -- our goal is to meet with people that had had some kind of an opioid overdose, but we want to catch them within like 24 to 72 hours of when they had that event. Because not everybody that has an overdose makes it to a hospital. And sometimes hospitals where they get presented with some of the help and direction that may work them into recovery, and sometimes they just don't ever make it to there. So we've seen through agencies in other states, up in Ohio and West Virginia are great leaders in this program, great results from this program, to where we send like a four-member team within 24 to 72 hours of an overdose, and we try to help guide them to a recovery effort. Stewart Marchman's been wonderful with working with us. If we come across somebody that wants the help, you know, we're going to get them on board right then and there. There's no waitlist, there's no wait at all. Because normally, they find that, through studies, that 24 to 72 hours after an overdose is about the best time that you're going to find somebody that's thinking about, you know, taking that step to recovery. So with the Police Department's help, with Stewart Marchman, myself, and with faith leadership, we want to go out there. We want to give them every opportunity to know what resources are there and to provide them whatever service we can do to help, you know, bring them to a recovery.
I have a question for you. So I remember two years ago, when I came to office, I mentioned, we had a conversation about this, the city manager, and so I'm really glad to see that it's come to fruition and then it's gone to another level. And initially, the vision for me was a bus. So I'm curious, what are you using for transportation right now? I had a vision of a paramedic and bus-type unit that offered different services. So how is this being handled now?
So to our overall global community health initiative, there are a couple of different phases. I believe that immediate access onsite that you brought forward is a latter phase. As far as transporting to, for this program, transporting to Stewart Marchman, or any recovery center for that matter, that is being worked through, through either a taxi voucher system or through law enforcement assistance.
And then the other question I have, because this was a deep interest of mine when I started off here, the other question I have is I recognize that Stewart Marchman works with those dealing with substance issues. But as you're going through your process, are you finding just a strong mental health component, which is different from substance use? And next part is, do you have any facilities for young people, teenagers, that you're sending them where it's not for substance? It's mental health, it's behavioral issues, it's conduct disorders, anything like that? Cutting issues, depression, or is it just substance?
Travis will be able to speak to it better through their training, because the DART team members went through extensive, pretty much an all-day training event hosted by a doctor that taught them how to recognize some of those mental issues that actually contribute to their dependency and addiction issues. But this doesn't primarily focus on solely the mental, but I would say a focus on the addiction side of things. We thank you very much, unless you have any questions, or you want to say anything.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Great program, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on to item number seven, which is citizen comments. This is for people addressing the city commission on any item on the consent agenda. And my first speaker is Frederick Brown, and on deck is Sandy Murphy.
Thank you to Mayor and city commission for allowing me to speak. First, Consent Agenda item 8C. I want to commend the city commission on their adoption of this Act, the Blue Carbon for Our Planet Act. It's obviously a no-brainer for us to live on beachside, and over the last 60 years, I've watched the beach slowly disappear. So I'm glad to see that the city is adopting that. I'd like to see us go a little bit further and contribute to that with the city not buying ICE vehicles and buying electric vehicles instead, which is one of the other items that's on the agenda. Next item, 8D. I would really like to see the city, and I know the mayor spoke on this at the last meeting, look into possibly using EVs, which would be ideal for the activities used by this department. Now, I realize the Cybertruck won't be out till fourth quarter this year, but that would be an ideal vehicle to add to the city's fleet. So I would request that the city look into a shorter-term lease, or whatever you could take, for a vehicle that you can use as a stopgap in the interim, because electric vehicles are by far the way of the future. They're far more efficient, they take away from the carbon footprint, and it would, as the mayor had stated in the last meeting, certainly put Daytona on the map for the future of the city, and seeing that we are a city that cares about the environment as well as the citizens. Thank you.
My next speaker is Sandy Murphy, and on deck is John Nicholson.
Good evening. Sandy Murphy, 136 Park Avenue. I wanted to thank you for putting the Blue Carbon Act on the agenda. I hope that you will vote in favor of it. I was shocked to find out that Daytona Beach was the sixth most impacted community in the United States in terms of climate change effects that are expected to change our city. And so I think that planning for resilience is going to be very important, and I would like to hear more about what our city is doing actively in that regard, and would suggest that that might be a good topic for a future commission meeting presentation. Thank you.
Sandy, I'd like to thank you for sending us that email. As soon as I saw it, I followed through with what you asked, but I'd like to thank you because I just thought it was a no-brainer, as the previous speaker said. And in addition to what he said, and a reminder of what I said the last time, I would like for the staff in the future, as it relates to all vehicle purchases, especially that are to be used on the beachside, you know, and if this is agreeable by the rest of the commission, I'm not trying to make a unilateral decision here, but that we have a quote for electric vehicles, and that we begin to have, you know, an option as to whether we want to purchase gas or electric vehicles. If we are going to be environmentally conscious, we have to begin to put in place measures that will help us to do that.
Absolutely. You're welcome.
Thank you.
And our final speaker on the consent agenda is John Nicholson.
413 North Cranville Avenue. I, too, would like to thank you for putting on the Blue Carbon. Several years ago, Glenn Ritchie had a presentation regarding reefs off of our coast. At the time, it would have been $20, $25 million to install the reefs to protect our beaches. Basically, there were people from Cocoa that came up and wanted surfing. But the things also created the idea that it would add 400 feet of permanent beach, because every year, you know, we lose the beach all the way up to the seawall. We've been doing that for 45 years I've been here. This would prevent that. And if indeed the sea rises, if we have that beach there, it would prevent us losing that opportunity. So I'm asking you, I talked to Deneen, we can get it free, and you know me, I love free, and free is a good price. They will put the reefs out there for free and save us $20 million bucks. So I would ask you to think about that. Secondly, Part A, when are we going to be able to be sitting in the auditorium? The county and the school board both allow residents. I'm asking you to consider allowing our residents full access to City Hall. And lastly, on Public Works with the pier, I'm always careful when the city looks at things. The Peabody, years ago, they wanted to give it away to the county. The Rec Hall, I'm sure you all remember, within the last five years, we were in the possibility of losing it. So I would like to know exactly what's going on. There was talk about tearing down the casino, tearing down the pier itself. So when you look at these things, what point are you all looking at them? The total wipeout of everything that's historic? If that's your goal, please let the public know in advance, because you're doing this. Jim is telling these people what he is hoping for, but doesn't give them any parameters. We, as a public, don't know anything that's going on until it's all finished and done and is presented to you guys. We should be able to have some input prior.
And that was my final speaker for the consent agenda.
Did he say he spoke to Deneen?
I think he did.
Deneen's been gone for a while. Okay. We have a motion for the -- do we have a motion?
No.
No motion? We entertain a motion?
So moved.
Yes.
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
We'll take a motion from Commissioner Reed, and we'll take a second from Commissioner Traeger. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. This motion carries 7-0.
Okay. We'll now move on to item number nine, which is our public hearings. Item number 9A is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division. Burgoyne Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting comprehensive plan amendments in accordance with Chapter 163 Part 2 Florida statutes, amending the future land use element Neighborhood E with respect to approximately 6.4 acres of land bounded by North Palmetto Avenue to the west, Bay Street to the north, and North Beach Street to the east, and approximately 2.8 acres of land bounded by North Palmetto Avenue to the west, Mary McLeod Bethune Boulevard to the north, and North Beach Street to the east, totaling approximately 9.4 acres, establishing a maximum-floor area ratio of 10 and a maximum of 150 dwelling units per acre, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date. So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner May and a second from Commissioner Delgado.
I do have speakers, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is Catherine Loudens Flagler, and on deck is John Nicholson.
Right here. Okay. Hello, everybody. Hello, everybody. I prepared a document, if you're interested in reading this now or after I'm speaking. The reason I'm here, I've been here for one year, approximately. The city is deteriorating. You're losing tenants and homes and old houses. Daytona is not what it used to be. I've come up with an idea that would re-generize Daytona, that you take many of these buildings for artists out at the flea market, and establish art businesses in many of these vacant buildings, where you could see the artists out at the flea markets, out at New Smyrna Beach, and over here at Daytona. These empty buildings, these empty houses, they could do their work, and you could have these little golf carts that they ride around for tourists to look at these artists of Daytona. That's Plan A of this paper that I wrote. Plan B is the redevelopment of Daytona's buildings. The prison population. Reawaken the population. Let people reside in these empty buildings that are all over the city. The prison population, they're not bad people, they're the strong people, they're the people that are holding society together, the people who are in prisons, most of them. So what I'm saying is that reawaken Daytona to the young people and the parties that used to be in the 1970s and the 1980s. I have here development, development, 9A, 9B, 9C, 9D, development, 9E, development, 9F, 9G, development, development, develop.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time has expired.
Okay.
So if you want to leave that with my staff member, they'll get it to us. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is John Nicholson, and then I do have Jessica Gao here on behalf of the applicant for any questions.
John Nicholson, 413 North Cranville Avenue. We can't afford to have the discussion we had the last month. When Consolati Tamoca wanted to build downtown, there was an hour's discussion about whether we wanted it or not, whether we were going to blindside them or not, whether it was this, that, and the other stuff. You only have an opportunity once. When people are looking at downtown to build, you do what you can to help them build. You don't do anything to stop them to build. Consolati Tamoca has been a very good partner to the city of Daytona Beach for the 40 years I've been here. I don't know what they did before that, but they have always been up and willing to help the city. Burgoyne, years and years ago, before I was born, Ruth Bates talked to about it, but they were very prominent in the city. If they do these two projects, it will be the synergy for others to come on board. I was sold that I was wrong when I talked about Williamson and Tangier-Allitt Mall and the development out there, that it was going to be bustling, and Robin said, nope, nothing's going to happen, 30 years, 40 years. I'm telling you, we have to do this. And Jim was correct. Jim and I fight all the time, but he was correct about moving City Hall here. We have to have skin in the game. We have to show the developers we are part of this new development. We are the new city. It's the new downtown. So I'm asking you not to throw any roadblocks into these people. Help them as much as you can, because the city of Daytona Beach relies on its downtown. And when it grows, the city grows with it. Thank you.
Okay. That was the last of my public speakers, and I do have Jessica Gao here.
Good evening, Jessica Gao, Copco Law Firm, 149 South Ridgewood Avenue. Here on behalf of Burgoyne Properties, we're pretty excited. We've got a good team here tonight from Burgoyne Properties. We have William College and Ken Wilson. From Laster Transportation Group, we've got Matt West. And from Zevco in our engineering group, we've got Jake Stare and Chris Rowley. So we want to take a moment. We've been doing this project with city staff for about a year and a half now, and it's been a great year and a half, and we want to thank city staff for everything that we've gone through with them. And we think that the final product, and I think we've got some pictures that we can show on the screen, shows Burgoyne's vision for downtown, and we're really excited to bring it forward to you guys and to ask and answer any questions that you guys have about it. Like I said, we've got the whole team here. If you have any questions, you can see our vision for the site, what we hope will be out there one day, to kind of build off of the progress that we've seen from Project Delta, from the Brown and Brown headquarters, from the Riverfront Park project. We hope that this is that next step in continuation for downtown Daytona Beach. So with that, I want to thank city staff again, I want to thank you guys for having us, and we've got the whole team here for any questions you have.
Well, I remember meeting with you all and seeing what I believe would certainly be a dynamic addition to our community. But I was wondering, do you all have any timeline for moving the project forward?
Definitely, I would say I can have William comment on it. I'll comment on the timeline in the PD agreement. That's just the baseline for the city side. I think construction plans for the first phase has to be submitted within five years under the agreement. So that is under the agreement, but obviously, we would like to move things quicker, and I'll have William weigh in there.
Okay. William College, Burgoyne Properties, 1823 Seminole Road in Jacksonville, Florida. First of all, Mayor Henry, thank you for your question. I know it's, you know, been a year and a half now, almost, since we first met with you and met with some of the commissioners on this project. And our company, Burgoyne, as most of you do know, and was noted by the speaker, has been a stakeholder down in the Beach Street historic downtown area for 80 years now. This year, I think, will be 80 years. And we have survived through all the different decades and the cycles that 80 years has brought to downtown Daytona. And so with regards to your question about the timeline, I think we're very excited to try to move
I know it's, you know, been a year and a half now, almost, since we first met with you and met with some of the commissioners on this project, and our company Burgoyne, as most of you do know, and was noted by the speaker, has been a stakeholder down in the Beach Street historic downtown area for 80 years now. This year, I think, will be 80 years, and we have survived through all the different decades and the cycles that 80 years has brought to downtown Daytona. And so with regards to your question about the timeline, I think we're very excited to try to move this project along as quickly as possible, and, you know, to that end, this has been, tonight, the culmination of a major step in that project, and Ken Wilson, my colleague and I, have had numerous conversations with interested parties, developers, that are interested in continuing the discussion on this project and on this parcel, and, you know, we just look forward to continuing to work with the city, the mayor's office, the commission, as we move through that process. So to answer your question quickly, there is statutory timelines that are contained in the PD agreement that I know are similar to the other PDs that have been recently passed here in the city of Daytona Beach, but beyond that, and in addition to that, you know, we look forward to moving this project along as quick as we can in partnership with all of you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, it's good to see you again.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any additional questions or comments? Okay, and there are no other speakers or questions?
No other speakers for this.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to item nine B, which is Development and Administrative Services Planning Division. Burgoyne rezoning to Plan Development Redevelopment Downtown. This is a PD RD. This is an ordinance on second reading, quasi judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 6.4 plus or minus acres of land bounded by North Palmetto Avenue to the west, Bay Street to the north, and North Beach Street to the east, from RDD 1, Redevelopment Downtown Beach Street, and RDD 2, Redevelopment Downtown Central Business District, to PD RD, Plan District Redevelopment, and 2.8 plus or minus acres of land bounded by North Palmetto Avenue to the west, Mary McLeod Bethune Boulevard to the north, and North Beach Street to the east, from RDD 3, Redevelopment Downtown Commercial, and RDD 4, Redevelopment Downtown Mixed Use, to PD RD, Plan Development Redevelopment. Approving the Burgoyne Downtown Plan District Agreement, authorizing development of the properties rezoned above, totaling 9.2 plus or minus acres as a mixed-use project, subject to conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
Who's the motion? Okay, Commissioner May and a second, Commissioner Reed. We have speakers.
I only have Jessica Gao here on behalf of the applicant. I don't have any other public speakers.
Okay, we have no questions for Jessica? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
All right, guys, we're ready for you, so we're ready to work together.
We're going to move on to item nine C, which is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division. Hand Avenue rezoning to multifamily residential 12, MFR 12. This is an ordinance on second reading, public hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 35 plus or minus acres of property generally located on the northeast quadrant of the intersection of Hand Avenue and Williamson Boulevard, from Volusia County R4 and R5 Urban Single Family Residential, and PDG Plan Development General, to MFR 12, Multifamily Residential 12, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Commissioner May and a second from Commissioner Delgado.
I have no other public speakers, but I do have Ms. Gao here on behalf of the applicant.
All right, no questions for Ms. Gao. All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on, item nine D was pulled from tonight's agenda, so we're going to move on to nine E, which is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division. Project Epsilon, Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading, public hearing. An ordinance adopting comprehensive plan amendments in accordance with Chapter 163, Part Two Florida statutes, in relation to 65.4 plus or minus acres of land, the subject property, located on the north side of LPJ Boulevard, approximately 780 feet east of Clyde Morris Boulevard and LPJ Boulevard, amending the future land use of 59.2 plus or minus acres of the subject property, from Level One Residential, Level Two Residential, and potentially environmentally sensitive, to mixed use and potentially environmentally sensitive. Amending the future land use element Neighborhood K Development Policy, creating Issue G Policy One, to revise maximum residential density and non-residential intensity for the subject property, subject to conditions, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Commissioner May and a second from Commissioner Henry.
I have no other public speakers, and I do have Ms. Gao here on behalf of the applicant.
All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, moving on to item nine F. It is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division. Project Epsilon, rezoning to Plan Development General, PDG. This is an ordinance on second reading, quasi judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code, rezoning 65 plus or minus acres of land generally located on the north side of LPJ Boulevard, approximately 780 feet east of Clyde Morris Boulevard, from County R2 Urban Single Family Residential, and County R4 Urban Single Family Residential, to PDG Plan Development General. Approving the Project Epsilon Plan District Agreement, permitting development of the property with mixed uses, subject to conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Commissioner Delgado and a second from Commissioner May.
I have no other public speakers, and I do have Ms. Gao here for questions.
I just wanted to ask something about affordable housing. Would this be one of the properties that would be giving us some money for affordable housing or putting up some affordable housing?
Jessica Gao, for the record, Copco Law Firm, 149 South Ridgewood Avenue. This project was one of the projects that was in process when the affordable housing ordinance came forward, and I know the commission decided that it would not apply to pending projects, but on top of that, just to provide, you know, some additional information, when you look at the property, the current zoning on it is Volusia County, and you look at the Volusia County unit allowances, based on what we're allowing here, we are actually reducing residential density on the property by, I think, about 15 units, so it would not apply to the ordinance if it did apply to a pending project.
Okay, any other questions? All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to item nine G. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division. Project Kappa, Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading, public hearing. An ordinance adopting comprehensive plan amendments in accordance with Chapter 163, Part Two Florida statutes, in relation to 9.8 plus or minus acres of land generally located south of LPJ Boulevard, approximately 1,800 feet east of Clyde Morris Boulevard, and 690 feet south of LPJ Boulevard, from general industrial to mixed use, amending the future land use element Neighborhood K Development Policy, creating Issue H Policy One, to revise maximum density and non-residential intensity for the property, subject to conditions, repealing all ordinances or parts of notices in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Commissioner May and a second from Commissioner Delgado.
I don't think I have any more speakers on nine G, but I do have Ms. Gao here for any questions.
All right, all those in favor, if there are no questions, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, we're going to move on to item nine H, which is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division. Project Kappa, rezoning to Plan Development General. This is an ordinance on second reading, quasi judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code, rezoning 9.8 plus or minus acres of land located 690 plus or minus feet south of LPJ Boulevard, and 1,800 plus or minus feet east of Clyde Morris Boulevard, from M3 General Industrial, General Industry Zoning, to PDG Plan Development General. Approving the Project Kappa Plan District Agreement to allow for the development of compensating storage pond and/or commercial development, subject to conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of notices in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner May and a second from Commissioner Reed. There are no questions for Ms. Gao?
What does it mean, compensating storage pond and/or commercial development? Which is it?
For the record, Jessica Gao, Copco Law Firm, 149 South Ridgewood Avenue. The property is currently undergoing site plan review for a compensatory storage pond that will make up a majority of the property, and we added some commercial uses that may be appropriate for this area, just because we don't like to put too few uses in a PD. If there's a very specific one-use PD agreement and the person who's under contract drops out, or the vision doesn't go through, then we have to go through the process all over again, so we just add some general flexibility in there, but the plan is for a comp storage pond, and it is undergoing site plan review with city staff currently for that use.
And what does it mean, the compensatory use may also be used to benefit off-site properties?
So if the entire property, it's about nine acres, if the entire property is developed as that compensatory storage use, which kind of creates drainage areas for other areas that were raised, if the entire site is used as a pond, then it can benefit adjacent properties or properties in the area that have to show that their impact to the floodplains by raising their property are offset. They can use some of the capacity in the compensatory storage pond on this site to offset their impact.
Does that mean you would be building on wetlands?
No. This, I don't believe the site has wetlands. If it does, it will go through the property permitting process with the Army Corps or the St. Johns, but I'm not, I don't believe we have well and issues on the site.
When I spoke to you, didn't you say there was wetlands? That's...
Not on this property.
Not on this one?
Yeah, we were talking about the property that was north of LPJ.
Okay, that one, okay. Thank you.
Ms. Gao, this actually sounds like it's a benefit to surrounding properties should they need the extra space, is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, it allows adjacent properties to develop using kind of more flexibility, with the understanding that the overall impact to the area would be benefited by the pond.
All right, thank you.
All right, we have no further questions. We have a motion, have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to item nine I, it's the Development and Administrative Services Redevelopment, Daytona Center, Nova and ISB. This is an ordinance on second reading, quasi judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 18.9 plus or minus acres of property located at 100 North Nova Road, from RDM 3 Midtown Activity Center Mixed Use, to PD RD Plan Development Redevelopment. Approving the Daytona Center Plan District Agreement, expanding permitted uses to include various commercial, institutional, and other non-residential uses, subject to certain conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of notices in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Traeger, and we'll take a second from Commissioner Reed.
I do have a speaker, Mr. Mayor, is, public speaker is Ann Ruby.
All right, Ms. Ruby.
Hi, Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. These, removing the uses, cigar lounge, packaged liquor store unless it included a grocery store, and the pawn shop, and then restricting the uses of storage facility and the probation office to the west side of the building, those were, took a lot of discussion in the Midtown Redevelopment Board and at the planning board, and those uses, changes in use, were to be included. And when I look at the backup, and it could just be me being confused at looking at the backup, the PD agreement that's included there does not say that those uses have been removed, it's in the staff summary, it's in the memo to the city manager, and the memo, the language says, the staff finds the revised PD substantially addresses the conditions and recommendations made by the Midtown Redevelopment Board, but I don't see any changes to the PD. And again, that could be just that I'm not reading the documents correctly, but I don't see any changes in the PD, and I would hope some of you would ask for clarification. Thank you.
Could you give us clarification on that, please?
Sure, the PD was changed by the applicant, so that they have addressed all of the concerns that we had, and I say "we," the planning board and the Midtown Board, and their concerns, so that is in here, and there are a list of the uses that are in here, and I think we also have the applicant here that can address that PD as well. So, get the right page here. Okay. And I think you all have that in front of you.
I think page 951, maybe?
Pardon me?
Maybe page 951, as uses?
Right, well, that's in my report on 951 with what you could have or not have, and that information that's in here that describes that is also, if you go to the PD itself, has been addressed and changed after this information was written in there that was for the planning board.
Yeah, I see a small two on the side.
Yeah, so when it carried forward, that final agreement that's signed by the applicant is the one that we're concerning ourselves with, and that's what that cover memo from staff says, which is at the beginning of the report, so. Do you have any...
But it says something about on 953, it says, uses shown in red text reference with footnote two are not permitted in RDM 3 district but can be established as a part of this proposed PD agreement.
Mayor Commission Jim Morris, Deputy City Manager, the agreement that's there for signature has been revised, consistent with the memorandum, consistent with the comments, and consistent with Ms. Ruby's questions. Those things have been deleted or adjusted to meet the concerns of the boards prior to you getting it for signature tonight, Mayor, which you will sign after approval, but the document you will sign has been revised.
Okay, so does that mean, can you review the ones that she named? Because she, my concern was, you know, I meant to bring this up, was that they didn't want a cigar lounge.
Yes, and it's been taken out. Ms. Gao has got her copies with her as well, and she can speak to it. The revisions requested by the boards have been made, and the deletions have occurred, or the location to the backside of the shopping center as it relates to the offices, those things have all been done, and the document for execution has those modifications.
Okay.
I guess my question would be, since that's the case...
Yes, ma'am.
They're not in the backup documents.
It's referenced in the report documents, I don't think it's necessarily in the copy of the PD that you have, but as far as the PD for execution, the one that was delivered had those revisions.
Okay.
Shouldn't we have that as part of our, will we have that as part of our material?
Ordinarily you would, I'm not sure the sequence of when the thing came in, but Ms. Gao is here to testify to you as well in respect to that point.
Jessica Gao, Copco Law Firm, 149 South Ridgewood Avenue. Just to comment, I think there may be some confusion, because the agenda packet tonight also has the materials from first reading, and that has an older version of the PD in it, but I do believe that online, the link to the agenda with the staff report had the signed PD agreement as a separate linked document, so I'm hoping that you guys have it in your packet. What Mr. Morris stated is correct, and I can just run through those changes again, that Ruby commented. Ruby commented on, that the Midtown Redevelopment Board and Planning Board requested. We have removed pawn shop and cigar lounge in its entirety. Probation parole office and the self-storage mini warehouse is limited to the west rear side of the center. And then liquor or package store would only be allowed if associated with a grocery store, which is an LDC-defined term, so it would be kind of an accessory use there.
Ms. Traeger, is there any issue at all with, I mean, is there a record issue with anything like that? Is this much to do about nothing if it doesn't all line up?
What's reflected in the resolution and what will ultimately be reflected in the PD will have the eliminated uses that you're going to vote upon tonight. So your motion will reflect those uses are not approved. I'll confirm that the final approved document does not have those uses and are consistent with your motion tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. For the record, I want to go on record, and I was on record with the applicant as well as with the Midtown Board, that I believe that a cigar lounge should have been allowed, but the applicant was okay with that, so it doesn't matter.
Sir, and say that there's a cigar lounge on Beach Street as well, right? So I mean, it's, it's something that, that people are doing, that people enjoy to do, and I've seen a multitude of, of racial diversity at that particular cigar bar on Beach Street.
Me too, and I, I think it's a positive part of the community as far as I can tell, although I'm not encouraging anyone to indulge in tobacco smoke.
If your motion then would just reflect that the PD agreement that you're approving will be consistent with the memorandum from Mr. Berger to Mr. Chisholm dated December 4th, 2020.
All right. We have a motion and a second?
Yeah, Commissioner Traeger was the motion, and Commissioner Reed was the second.
Yeah. All right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to item 9J, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Land Development Code text amendment to multifamily uses. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending section 11.4.8 measurement of the Land Development Code to provide measurements and rear, rearload setbacks for residential uses, amending section 11.5 terms and uses defined of the Land Development Code to revise definitions for multifamily complex, multifamily dwelling, and townhouse dwellings, repealing all ordinances or parts of notices in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Commissioner May. We have a second from Commissioner Henry.
I have no speakers for this item, Mr. Mayor.
All right, there are no speakers. All those in favor, if there are no questions, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to, let's see. Sorry. Moving on to item 9K, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, RV Parks Location, Land Development Code text amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending section 5.2. B of Article 5 of the Land Development Code revising the use-specific standards related to allowable locations for recreational vehicle parks, repealing all ordinances or parts of notices in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date. So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner May.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Henry. All right.
And I do have one speaker for item 9K. It's Diane, and I can't quite read, is it Kalopis? From Ormond Beach?
My name is Diane Kalopis, and I live in Ormond Beach, but I'm very much concerned about the properties that we're talking about with the RVs coming in on International Speedway there. Those properties have been there for a very, very long time. Some of them have this, it's called high-risk estates. And high-risk estate has an older community, and where my husband, my late husband and I bought property, it is the brand-new type of area. Since we started to take things, you know, we cleared the land, we filled the land, he did the culverts and the swales and everything, and it goes into a pond. That pond is not a pond. That pond is a borrow pit. And by borrow pit, it's because when 92 is being built further west, they dug up the dirt from there and they put it onto the, on 92. So it's not really a pond. My husband and I own two pieces of property there. And like I said, we cleared it, we went through hoops to get it, we had to, you know, pay money to get the land, then we had to get money to clear it, then finally, it took us years and years, from 2004 to last year. And last year, we were ready to, you know, go ahead. We even have permission from the building board in the land, from Jesse and from Marcia over there, they're in charge of the, the land regulations. And I said, well, you know, by the time we build it, my husband is old, my husband has all these problems and everything, and, you know, by the time they build the house, it's going to, you know, be too late for him. So we even had, okay, the manufactured homes. Having those RVs there, you're talking about 480 RVs coming over there, and having all kinds of other structures put over there, gas stations, and I guess stores or, or whatever. And it's just too much of air pollution, too small of an area to have so many RVs, and it's just across the pond. My, my husb, uh, land.
Let her go ahead. Just finish your thoughts, but go ahead.
I'm sorry?
Your time is up, but you go ahead and finish your thoughts.
Oh, okay, finish it up, all right. Well, the, the point is, is that none of the other people in the high-risk estates got notified about the RVs coming in? The only one that, I got a letter, and I was, I'm the only one that got a letter, and I tried to pass it around, and everybody laughed at me, no, no, it's not going to happen. Well, it looks like it's happening. I wish you would reconsider it, and you would go somewhere else, go further west, and leave that part of land that is beautiful land. There's, there's trees there with, with eagles in it, there's all kinds of, you know, little critters running around. It's too much demolition going on, you know, tearing down trees and, and areas. Leave that part alone, leave high-risk estates alone. And that building those, putting those RVs there is going to be noisy, it's going to be, just think of it, a whole dealership, a car dealership, that's what it would look like. That 480 RVs with, with amenities over there, and if you read the information about it, all the amenities that they're going to have there, and the access here and the access there, and is there going to be a protection there? Is there going to be a police force over there for 480 cars or, or RVs? Is there going to be emergency evac there?
Okay.
What is going to be there?
Okay. We, thank you.
Please consider to move it somewhere else. Thank you very much.
Do we have any questions, or the applicant want to respond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joey Posey, 420 South Nova, attorney for the applicant on the following two items, but I know we're touching on the, the project that is tangentially has to do with what you guys are voting on. And I, and just to speak specifics about RV parks, you know, these are beautiful places, and you're talking about folks that want to spend upwards of a quarter of a million dollars, half a million dollars to eventually just visit. And, you know, this is, this is a lot of what you're seeing people move to as, you know, COVID has kind of expedited this process where, you know, older, you know, the folks that are older like to travel, want to be able to get around, and an RV is an excellent vehicle to make that happen, and especially even amongst millennial generation, too. But to speak specifically to the concerns, I'm, I'm happy to go into the specifics of the project, but I briefly wanted to touch on that RVs parks are a good thing.
Okay, that's good. No other, no other questions necessary, or, okay, no, no questions from the staff? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye. Nobody's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I mean, do I need to take a roll call vote? You all wake up? Okay, we'll take, we'll start.
I'm just mulling this over for just a second. I just, I listened to what the young lady.
Do you have questions? Let's ask and talk about it.
Are these people planning on coming to live or vacation? What is the intent here?
In my experience, it's to vacation. You know, it's not necessarily, you don't establish a permanent residence with an RV. It's to, you know, come, spend your money, you know, take advantage of the amenities that may be on site, but more of it is to experience, you know, what the area has to offer. And, you know, those, those are the folks that, you know, you, I would love to see encouraged in that, you know, those are the folks you want to attract, because they're, they're here to enjoy and not to cause a ruckus, and, you know, they, they have a very expensive vehicle, so I imagine they're not, you know, there's no more than just trying to park the vehicle and try to enjoy the amenities as, as far as they usually take it.
And then what is the shortest stay versus the longest stay? So what is the turnaround? I think that the resident has a valid point in my, as a single person, a single person, you know, and, and I have a home, let's say, which I have a condominium, but let's say there were people coming in and out of my neighborhood on a regular basis, or there were different faces there all the time. What is the shortest stay and what is the longest stay?
Oh, sure. I mean, you could, you do see RVs parks with annual leases, but I, I specifically speaking to the, our project, there's no access through the residential subdivision, and I think just without getting into the details of the project, which I'm happy to, I, I think we're, there's a misunderstanding of what we're proposing. This is 170 acres, of which 89 acres is preservation. No one's impacted. And, you know, I understand the neighbor who lives next to the borrow pit, which is an FDOT borrow pit, and we have no, there's nothing changing with that, that there's, there's a substantial distance between her visual impact, there's a huge buffer in between everything, and as much as I understand that maybe she perceives that she will be impacted, there's no traffic coming to her neighborhood.
And we have to remember, this is the text amendment and not the actual project, so we should probably discuss that at that time. Okay.
It would not be adjoining a residential use, would it?
Not a uses, no, but the, there are a couple homes that are, would be in proximity of the property line, but the distance between the actual park and the home that, I, I believe the home that she's mentioning is hundreds of feet away. That, it's a, it's a huge distance. I don't have that number with me, but you can even see from the, the site plan roughly where she's talking about on the north side of the borrow pit, that it's, it's a long jog to get to where we're talking about.
It says the park shall not be located on land adjoining a single-family residential use.
Correct. And if I understand how the staff is interpreting use, it's an active use of residential use. There are some properties that are zoned residential, just to be completely transparent on the, on the northern side of the, or the western side of the property, a lot of which is owned by our client, too, which has nothing to do with this project, but there's no home out there that's actively being used that's anywhere near adjacent to the actual park.
Well, we have a motion on the floor. There are no other questions. Then let's take a vote. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
We move on to item 9L, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Daytona Lakes RV Resort Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting comprehensive plan amendments in accordance with Chapter 163, Part 2 Florida statutes, amending the future land use map designation of 173.6 plus or minus acres of land generally located on the west side of the access ramp from Interstate 4 at US 92 International Speedway Boulevard from Volusia County Low-Impact Urban and Public Semley Public to City Mixed Use, amending the future land use element neighborhood VE development policy to limit residential density and commercial intensity of the property subject to conditions, repealing all ordinances or parts of notices in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date. So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and you have a second?
I do have a speaker, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Diane Kel, Kel, I'm, I'm sorry for mispronouncing Kalopis.
Yeah, Ms. Kalopis.
Yes, my name is Diane Kalopis, and I live at 63 Hernandez Avenue. I was just here a little minute ago. The gentleman that was just up and said that it, it's not anywhere near any families, there's a family less than 50 feet from that, the border of where they, they showed the diagram and everything. There's a pond, and then right beyond that, it, it's like a cutout, it's like a cutout. They, they cut that part out. So one part, the east, southeast part of the border is on my property, okay? It's, it's going to affect my property. And the other one that is northeast, where that cutout is on the top there, that's where, what's his name, Kenny and his wife live there, they have two children, they have goats, they have, they're a very nice family, they're a young family, and that is just, it's by the pond, so you can get across that piece of land, maybe 50 feet, maybe not even 60 feet. I see it right there. So it's, that's a lie, that it's not encroaching. It is encroaching. And why haven't, why haven't the developers sent out a letter to everybody? Why did they pick me to, you know, even though I live in Ormond, I was going to build a house there, but I'm, I'm living in Ormond? So why did they, why did they, you know, send it just to me and they didn't send it to the rest of the development? It's high-risk estates is a huge place. Can anybody answer that for me?
Thank you, Dennis Marzak, Planning Director for the city. Notices do, are required to go out for all items, especially the rezonings. They're required to, to go to all property owners that are within 300 feet of the property subject to the rezoning. Also, we do a posting of the property, so we'll put up signs of the property, as well as we have an email blast that goes, anybody who is on our email list in the city will get a blast of a item that's going forward. So we have three different ways to be able to make people aware when we do.
Well, that couple that lives right across the street from my property, they never got it. They never got the first one, which I got last year, and they didn't get this one that I got this year, so.
And if they were, if they were outside of the 300, they wouldn't have.
No, they're directly across the street from me.
Okay. Well, we'll just have to speak to your issue, and it sounds as though you informed them, and I'm not excusing that if they didn't receive it, they certainly had a right to receive it. Do we have verification?
No, we send out first-class mail, what we send out. We have, we have a list of the property owners that get the first-class mail, so we have, have that information, we have the letter that goes out, and that's what, that's what we have from the applicant.
Okay.
I think that the reason why I got it is because I was so active in the building department and land.
Okay.
But.
Well, we, we will address your concern, but as it relates to them, I, they'd have to, you know, sort of speak more for themselves. They know about it now, you've informed them.
Also, I'd like to know, why is this RV park going right there? If you go east on International, I don't know if you people, you know, are aware of the flea market, right across the street from the flea market, there's a huge RV park there. Why not expand that one? Why come all the way up over there?
Okay.
The last piece of little heaven that there is.
Well, this, they have, you know, it's their property, so they, these are, that's two separate things. You'd have to.
Well, that's not benefit, that's not benefiting high-risk estates at all.
No, ma'am. It's not.
Well, I have another turn to speak because I wrote out three of those, so I'll be back.
Well, we'll see, when you come back, you're definitely entitled, and we appreciate it.
All right.
Do we have any other questions? All right, we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to item 9M. It's Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Daytona Lakes RV Resort Res zoning and Plan Development General. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi-judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the lands above my code to rezone 173.3 plus or minus acres of property generally located on the west side of the access ramp for Interstate 4 at US 92 International Speedway Boulevard from PDG Plan Development General to PDG Plan Development General, approving the Daytona Lakes RV Resort Plan District Agreement to allow for the development of a recreational vehicle resort with a maximum of 480 recreational vehicle spaces and associated site amenities and approximately 100,000 square feet of standalone commercial uses, subject to certain condition. Authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement. Repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and from Commissioner Gervado, a second from Commissioner May, and Ms. Kalopis.
And I'm sorry, Ms. Kalopis?
Yes, Diane Kalopis, 63 Hernandez Avenue, Ormond Beach. As far as everything that I have said before, the other issue is if they were permitted to go ahead and go there, which I hope they're not going to be permitted to go there. What kind of buffer is there going to be? I mean, well, how much buffering? Our property spans from where that cutout is directly to the pond. So are they going to buffer it on the east side of the pond? Or are they going to buffer it on our side of the pond? So that's another perplexing thing. Now, another thing I have to say is that the properties out there started selling in 1950-something, '57. They were small properties, 50 by 100 feet. Well, now the regulations have changed, and so we had to work it real, real well to make it 75 feet frontage. And then our property now, after all these years of changing and everything, is 75, two pieces of property each, is 75 frontage on General Marshall, and it goes back 217 feet. So I'm interested to know, how are they going to buffer this? You know, just putting up trees? Will they put up a wall? What are they going to do? Take away our view? You know, it's, and the view that we're going to have is the RVs blowing their exhaust into, you know, onto our properties. So I really ask fervently, not just for myself, but for, when we, like I said, when we first started to do the change, as far as moving out there and clearing the land and everything, that was all vacant. The road was a dirt road. My husband dredged some of the dirt out of the pond and put it on General Marshall to lift it up a little bit because it was all potted. Since we started over there in 2004, there has been four, five families that have built homes on General Marshall alone. If you go further in, you know, further west, some of the places are more developed than others, but there's still a lot of, you know, empty lots over there. And those lots, if properly combined, they can service, they can service, you know, multifamily homes, really. I mean, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of homes. And that would be a waste because nobody-
Thank you, ma'am.
Your time's up.
Oh, okay. There's no, I'm not going to be speaking anymore. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have any questions? Could you identify the buffer between her property or there are properties in your property?
Of course, Mayor. The, if you look at the site plan here, the specific property she's speaking to, and you can see the carve-out in the middle there with the borrow pit. And the 25-foot buffer would be along that northerly end to the south. The orientation's a little funny, but if you're looking at this, it would be to the south, which would be to your left. And also the preservation area, which has substantial natural vegetation too. And I think what she may be alluding to is the commercial area in the front with the five-foot buffer, which is consistent with code, that it has to be a densely vegetated buffer. It has to be a B-type buffer for five foot. But that, that's maybe the one that she's trying to allude to, but that's the commercial area. That isn't the actual RV park. The other part to this too, that I didn't get a chance to mention, is that this plan actually has been approved previously. This was an existing PD that was already pre-approved that, I cannot remember the date, but it has been quite some time. And all this does is recertify what we already approved. So I don't think this should come as a surprise for the neighbor because she should have known the existing entitlements that were already there, and also that there was a borrow pit behind her at 1.2 in the past. So, I mean, I don't mean to maybe rewrite history here. I just wanted to point those things out that it isn't as much of a surprise as it may seem.
Thank you. All right, do we have any other questions? All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, sir.
And our last two agenda items, 10A and 10B, were removed from the agenda, so.
Okay, at this time, we will move on to our commission comments. And I believe we start with, let's see which commissioner it is.
Commissioner Cantu, I believe.
Commissioner Cantu, correct? She was first. Okay.
To make this brief, I had a very nice meeting with Mrs. Bates from the House Authority. We discussed a lot of different things that's happening. Mrs. Bates advised me, she originally, where she used to work, used to do updates to the commission, like, I think she said, actually, twice a month. I would like to see if we could get some updates, maybe at least twice a year, with the House Authority is doing. I mean, we need transparency to our constituents.
I'm in agreement with Ms. Bates coming in twice a year. I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
Personally. I try to keep up with her, but I think it's, the public would then-
Public, right.
Would be able to know from our perspective. Although her meetings are also public knowledge, but this is a different platform.
Correct.
So, yeah.
Okay. And the last thing, I guess, October 21st commission meeting. It was discussed that an idea of a tax task force to be formed to address the workforce housing. I was informed by the Daytona Regional Chamber, Volusia Building Industry, and the Volusia County Association for Responsible Development is ready to work on this when called or if they are called upon. I told them I would let you all know.
I don't know, I'm just looking, I'm looking this way, looking at you, looking at you guys. Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, fine. Commissioner Henry?
Very briefly tonight, just want to say that the Santa Run was amazing. Mr. Williams wanted to come and thank everyone himself, but he couldn't tonight, so he asked if I would relay the message that he appreciates the police department and fire department and city manager and everyone who helped to pull that Santa Run together. It was a great thing to see in the community because you saw the children interacting with the police officers. And this time, when they saw, you know, the red and blue lights coming around, they were smiling and waving, and candy was thrown out. And it was just a really great thing for the community. And police officers, I believe, enjoyed it very much as well. And they have, Captain Gosse has said that next year is going to be bigger, better, more exciting, and they are going to take the lead as far as planning the routes and making sure the routes are very well planned for the people in the community, marketing it very well. So I just really want to thank them for all they did because it was, Malcolm did a fantastic job throwing it together at the last minute. And so I want to thank him as well. So it was a really great, great time. Let's see. One other thing, and that is that the, so I'm reading about the school board starting their own police department, which I think is the craziest thing. I'm not for that at all. So I took the time to thoroughly investigate exactly what that means and talked to Sheriff Chitwood, who is, you know, trains the guardians, and see what that means for us, what that means for the city, what that means for the actual school boards. Because I was reading that police officers would have, would be able to arrest, arrest children, not only on the campus, but if they did something on the campus, and I hope I'm getting this right, they could even go to the home and arrest a child because it was done on, in an event that happened on campus. Anyway, what he didn't have the answer to, which was, which he brought up, which was a great question, and that is that I know that we had grants for our officers to be in, in each school. And I think that was done prior to me. That was done when he was here and probably a couple of you all were on the commission. And he brought up a very good point as far as what does that mean for our police officers who are going to still be in those cities, still be in those schools because of the grants that we have? Who would they, who would they, who would be responsible for our officers? Would they be under the realm of the new police department or how that would work? I would be very concerned. Just talking to him and getting enlightened on a lot of information as far as potential things that can really happen and really go wrong with this police department, things that the Parkland law put into place to, to kind of combat potential accidents, potential dangerous situations, potential lawsuits, or putting police officers in bad situations. And I just want to know where that leaves our officers. I would not feel comfortable with our officers, not under the leadership, the great leadership of who we have now leading them and being responsible for them. So I would, I would like to know, who is going to be responsible for? How is that going to work with our officers in the school? Will they be independent of that? Or will they fall under that police department? Or would it be split? How's that going to go?
It's my understanding that they're not looking to take over all schools. So this wouldn't even be a concern of ours. They're only looking at coming into the schools that currently have the guardians, which we don't, we have, I think, two guardians. Maybe, I think we have a guardian as just an additional support at Mainland and one other. But our officers would be staying in place, so this really wouldn't even impact our jurisdiction because we have full-time officers in all the schools. But they're only looking to put those officers in the schools that are guardians. And it's my understanding that this was pulled from the agenda. I think they want to go for it with further discussion before they do anything.
They need to.
Our officers would always report to our chief.
Yes.
And our police would still have jurisdiction in the schools?
Yes.
Even with the-
Even with them being able-
I believe so. But that, you know, it'd be further discussion on that.
Further discussion to clarify that. I worked in a district that had this type of setting, where the school district was a certified law enforcement agency. But they had a partnership with the police in the community, and it, from my perspective, went off flawlessly. But it empowered the police that they had through the district to be able to work, you know, and be able to do things that the guardians can't do. And it would probably be beneficial to those districts. And it is your responsibility and our responsibility to make certain that we look out for Daytona Beach. But overall, from a district standpoint, you know, I do believe that they should at least consider it and look at it to see if it could work for this area. It's a much larger district, would be a lot harder task, but could happen.
From, from, from the information that I gathered, I didn't feel like it was, would be something that would, because they would be able to do so much more than what the guardians would be able to do as far as arresting students and arresting children who may have sold, stole $50 worth of candy. It's a lot to it if you really take the time to really delve into what actually they can do as opposed to what potentially our officers probably wouldn't do. Is how it was explained to me. Things that our officers probably wouldn't go into the school and criminalize, they would be able to crimina- Those officers would be able to criminalize. And something small that our office, officers would probably, being well-trained, would go in and say, you know, this is not something that's, that we want to do. They will have the authority to pressure, to put the pressure on, to be able to arrest students for things that Daytona Beach Police Department would not ever dream of doing.
That might be true, but I think that's a matter of judgment to, you know, they're, they would have to train their people to be on the caliber of, the folks that I worked with and putting them were, you know, from my perspective, as qualified and did as good a job as the local police did. And I worked with them and had to partner with them as an administrator on a lot of different situations. But if they're going to, would have folks that weren't as well-trained, then that would be problematic.
Yeah, I definitely understand the concern, and I hear you, I know where you're coming from because I could say all of our school resource officers are extremely passionate about what they do. And I think we place them well in those specific schools. And we see it all the time. We just had shop with a cop where, you know, these children run up and they just, Officer Debbie or Officer so-and-so. They're like, you know, a part of the family and a part of the school. And I just think they're a perfect fit. So, yeah, we would never want a new entity to come in and disrupt the relationship with our students in our community.
But the other thing that it gives them the authority to do in working in a school, you have people who come onto the campus and behave in ways that it's better to have a policeman in that setting.
I'm okay with them having a policeman. It's the-
Who controls the policeman.
Difference in what I feel our police department would do or a city police department would do. And I won't go into conversation about everything that was discussed, but I did get feeling for some things that could possibly place the district in some really bad situations because of the level of power that would be given to the officers and the new police chief of the school board. It could be potentially problematic if you want to reach out to him because he explains it so very well. I suggest you reach out to him. Even though you're saying that it doesn't affect, affect us, if people want to be, want to know more about it and know the pros and the cons of it, and you as an administrator probably maybe reach out to him so he could, he could explain some of those things to you as well. So, and my concern too is, is they would be allowed to open carry, so they would be able to have their gun where it's seen and-
It's not bad.
And certain things, the guardian program does not allow, you know, those things are not allowed. And I could see that kind of being problematic on a high school campus with tons of kids per se. So. Also, if 250, I'd like to do 250 from Bike Week sponsorship funds for the Mainland varsity baseball team. And that's all my comments for tonight.
All right. I would also like to do 150 in support of the Mainland baseball team. They have a new baseball coach. He was a Mainland graduate and a local, obviously a local kid, a good kid. Team's going to go far with him. Commissioner Reed?
Yes, sir. I'm looking at the public comments we received from Coach Jason Youngman about our traveling team playing in the park. And I know we have restricted some of the things or a lot of what's happening in our parks, but we are allowing swimming because it's out in the open. And this team, based on what this report says, is doing extremely well, but they're finding it difficult to find places where they can practice. And it's difficult for the parents to travel to these different locations. And I'm wondering if we could consider his request to let the students, the team, team students, their college mind, to let the young people play at Bethune Point, since it is out in the open. He implies that they are practicing all the CDC guidelines as well as this is a distance game, unlike football where you're right up on each other. You know, you got the bases that are all spread out. You got somebody up at bat. The people are allowed in the field, that sort of thing. If we would consider his request that was sent to us in public comments.
I saw that also. I actually spoke to someone on that.
What are your thoughts on that, colleagues?
Anybody? You okay with it or are you opposed to it?
I'm okay with it.
Okay, great.
I, okay.
And young people need an outlet. You know, we've all been cooped up. And at least this is something that's organized, instructed play, and controlled by adults. So thank you for that consideration.
And as we're moving forward through COVID, we're learning how to try to live with it, although I don't think we're doing as good a job as we could. That's another matter.
And also, I like to see when our officers are interacting and they are out there working in our leisure services and volunteering in our parks and recreation and leisure services. So I definitely would support it.
Thank you. Thank you all. I don't know them personally. I just read this.
I know one of the, some, a couple of the kids that play on the team and their parents. And so I had told them I would mention it also.
Okay, great. Great minds think alike. Well, Deputy Chief Goss, we may not have had a Santa run in Midtown. However, I would like to thank Jakarta Robinson for donating 50 hams that we were able to disperse to the Midtown Senior Oasis because they really hadn't had anything or any type of interaction since March. The other Oases is, you know, they have a little budget and they were doing something, something. But we were able to, with the help of leisure services, to be able to pass those hams out to them on the 19th of December. And they were very grateful for that. Now, I can't compete with Craft Stop. They gave out 800 hams. Yes, two different days by popular demand. All of them gave out 800 hams to the community. But those 50 were greatly appreciated by those seniors citizens. We did practice CDC guidelines with our chairs spread apart so they could wait their turn to receive. And she had actually been trying to give hams away. And when she called me and said she had a few hams, I said, well, how many is a few? And she said, well, let me count. And then she told me 45. 45 hams? What am I supposed to do with 45 hams? And then she came back and said, well, can you hand them five more? So we thought about it and just grateful that she and I could be a blessing to those seniors. And they were very grateful, very grateful.
Oh, definitely were.
Yeah. Then I just want to just do a little, since I'm shining a little light on what's all going on. I want you to know that Daytona Beach Chapter of the Leaks, we purchased 3,000 shields to pass out to essential workers. And we've identified nursing homes and other places where people are helping folks. And we still got, I think we still have maybe about 500 or so left. So if you all can think of somewhere that perhaps we could donate some facial shields, we greatly appreciate it. It's under one of our health initiatives and just trying to meet the needs of our community and help, you know, in that regard. And then if you notice, in the Daytona Beach Times, the Daytona Beach Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated helped with family renew at all three locations as well as at Hope Place. We partnered with Bethune Cookman. They have a Saturday Books and Bears program that, of course, they were not able to execute. And Dr. Tasha Lomans gave us 90 gifts to add to what we already had prepared. We gave 45 of those to both, to the three family renew locations. And the other 45 went to Hope Place for those families, those homeless families that are housed at the old elementary school. So they're very grateful. We've actually adopted Hope Place. So every Christmas, we do something as well as we go in, we organize their receiving area. People don't realize, you know, one man's junk is another man's treasure. But then again, don't give somebody something you don't want. So we go in and we look at these things and see if it's even, you know, reasonable to give to a family. And we organize the children's clothing and what have you. I just want to remind you all that this weekend, Friday and Saturday, is our first virtual Fresh Book Festival. And so it will be online. You can look at the various authors and see the short films. It's all day Friday and all day Saturday. Mr. Mayor, you giving us some awards this year?
No, I don't think I'm on the agenda, but I'm going to be there.
I'll be giving some on Saturday. But, you know, this is our eighth year supporting Fresh Book Festival. So this is our Fresh Book Festival. And we just want people to participate and to just enjoy, you know, the fact that we have these people from all over the country. And she is, it's actually international this year. She has joined with the London Book Festival. And so we're just growing in leaps and bounds. So please continue to support the Fresh Book Festival. And that concludes my comments.
Great, great.
Thank you, sir.
Look forward to it. Commissioner Traeger?
Yes. A while ago, I had a letter on, and Mr. King on Harrison Road. He had a petition signed by over 50% of the people on that road, and they were asking for some speed bumps. He called me the other day and said they had not gotten them yet. And if I knew where they were with them, and I didn't, so I'm asking. Okay. Okay. He turned in the petition. Harrison Road. Also, gentlemen, we talked, I gave you his number a couple of meetings ago, about benches on Derbyshire. He said that he's an older gentleman with a heart problem, and he would like to know if we could put some benches on Derbyshire so he could sit. Told him I would bring it up at the meeting. I got an email from someone who was visiting here. And they went to the beach around Screamer's Park. And they were very disappointed because there were a lot of people idling around there. And he had a family and anyhow. And I want to say thank you to Travis Anderson and Drew Driscoll. I think you're doing wonderful work. And both chiefs, of course, too. And keep it up. And wear your mask, keep your distance, get your shots, whatever.
Amen.
Keep well.
Amen. Commissioner Delgado?
Thank you. When are we going to discuss or are we going to talk about kind of the Bike Week game plan? As far as if we're gonna...
I was thinking the same thing.
Because I know, I got some calls from the business owners in that area. And I think they kind of want a signal from us as to what we're thinking so they can start kind of making some plans. I think the sooner they get a sense, the better. I mean, I'm saying that's, you know, a Hobson's choice. I mean, there's nothing, there's no good solution, I think, to that problem. I think, you know, we, we have, I think people are learning to live within the confines of COVID better. And I think people are deciding for themselves, you know, with more information what to do. I don't think any of the, I don't think there's going to be any medical climate change or sea change between now and then. I don't think the vaccine is going to have, have had time to work or anything like that. So, you know, is that, is that coming up on the next agenda item? Or should we, is that going to...
Why don't we discuss it? I mean, you all have, the sooner we can get information out to merchants, the better. And I know, we all know that. But we have not authorized some of these events. And I don't remember if it was on the last submission that we provided to the commission. Remember, we approved a bunch of events? Was Bike Week on that list, Jim?
I don't believe so.
No, it wasn't. I wouldn't have agreed to it just like that.
Jim Morris, Chevy City Manager. No, sir, it was not. We have Bike Week Master Plan stuff coming to you on, I believe, the next agenda.
Are we receiving...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We've met with the task force folks, the staff lines, like we always do. And had the discussion with them that it's something that is hard to anticipate what the commission's position would be based on health conditions that are in effect at the time. And certainly, last year was something that they didn't appreciate necessarily, but they also understood. And we had the discussion with them at the Ocean Center, a huge room because we were socially distanced out across there, and talked about the fact, I talked about the fact that it would have to be something the commission would have to determine based on conditions that were in effect at the time of the event. So everybody's trying to get ready to proceed. But the proviso in the discussion was that it's a health issue that the commission probably couldn't know for sure what the conditions would be at the time it come up.
Did we ask for a plan, a socially distancing plan or anything of that nature?
So the way these plans work, it isn't so much an operational plan. It's the plans on the private property that, but Main Street, that's really the Bike Week. You've got different phases of the Bike Week Master Plan. And you've got the public property plan, which really is the open street. And there's not a means necessarily to social distance. It's more asking people to have the practices that they might have. And just as an aside, the Main Street merchants elected not to pursue their New Year's Eve event because of the situation. But they knew they couldn't control it from the perspective of whether they cut out the ball drop and however they did the fireworks. They just weren't convinced, they weren't convinced that they could do what needed to be done to safely operate. So the discussion that we had with merchants was it really would be a commission question to consider and determine how to proceed based on what the merchants want to do. We have what they want to do in terms of their plans. And it's coming to you, I believe, on the next agenda.
Obviously, we could get the governor could step in and, you know, set something from on high as to what we'd have to do if there was some. I think I saw today's Florida have the second highest rate of new cases or something like that. So, I mean, I suppose things could get worse from a medical perspective. I don't, I don't know. I mean, we, we said no to the last year's events. I don't know that things have really changed from a medical sense just because of the availability of the vaccine for a few people. But at the same time, I know that that was a very unpopular decision. And, you know, maybe that people now have had, after a year of living with it, can kind of better make their own decisions as to what they want to do. And maybe, you know, maybe we can step back a little bit and see what the recommendations are or what the, you know, what the requests are from the merchants and see if they can be accommodated in a safe way. I guess we'd have to look at what each merchant's requesting.
May I weigh in on this?
The way, the way, sorry.
Can I weigh in on this for a second, Commissioner Delgado?
I didn't mean to go in.
So the last statement was what the merchants want, right? So I was going to bring this up. I had a few points, but I'm going to. Bike Week was definitely one of the points. So there are two stories I want to tell you that are very brief, okay? The first is a call from a resident who discussed Bike Week with me. He told me I could mention his name, but I'm choosing not to. And we had a conversation about the fact that he really hoped that we would allow Bike Week to happen because he is a disabled veteran and he actually makes money with the Lyft program with regard to giving people rides during the Bike Week event, right? That was a surprising phone call to me, that a resident would take the time to say, I'm a resident. Olivia, I'm not a business person. I'm a resident and I actually make money. I've spoken to others...
If he says he makes money, he's a business person.
No, he's a person who's trying to earn a living the best way that he can. And for the longest time now, considering that the events have not been taking place, he hasn't been able to make a living. So that one broke my heart a little bit.
He hasn't been able to make a living because...
No, because of our events. Well, we have limited events and people are just not doing that. So he's suffering with his family right now. That's number one. That's just a person who works here in the area, which we all know about this, right? Here's another one. I speak to merchants, and I spoke to quite a few of them, not just some of them, on MMB. And I asked them, how do you feel about this? Is this something you want? The response I got, and that was as of this week and as late as last night, as I was still making phone calls, getting ready for this meeting, was we want the event to go forth. And if we decide that we don't want to participate, that's our choice. But we want to have, we want it to go forward as we would normally go forward. And then we will make adjustments if we need to make adjustments. What we don't want is to have the event be stopped against our will. We want to be able to make that decision. That was Midtown area, okay, for more than one merchant. Then I met with the merchants yesterday on Main Street. I spent about an hour with them.
Merchants where?
On Main Street, okay? Not just the bar merchants. They have a merchants' association. And even the ones who weren't there sent some representation. They were represented. And here it is. Imagine a group of people who are on the edge of, they're not angry. When you think you're about to lose everything and you have. I met with Captain Lee two weeks prior. We met with the gentleman. He was, he owns two or three restaurants. The man was almost in tears. I mean, some of those merchants are, and I'm feeling for them right now when I think about it because those businesses, as a business person, I feel for them. And they truly are suffering. And really, any plan that we put in place, they will follow it. I truly believe that. And what they said was that they just want the opportunity to be able to survive this. Now, this is the 80th anniversary. All the other cities around us are doing it. And it's so painful, painful, to watch all of this go to the other places and not experience it here. It's already hard that they're losing money. But then to watch everybody else, you know, making a living and you have to sit by and watch it is probably the hardest thing in business to do, the hardest thing. So I recognize that we are trying to do the right medical thing. But I agree with Commissioner Delgado that, you know, we've reached a point where we're not just suffering from a health situation, but now it's an emotional situation. I'm watching these merchants and I'm thinking to myself, God, they've been there for 30 years. They never saw this coming. Nobody did. Midtown, not good. But those conversations were quiet, just quiet. So, you know, I have a list of facts here that I could share with you in terms of, and I'm going to hand it out to you. These are all the cities that are having Bike Weeks, all right? They are moving forward. People are coming. Holly Hill is doing it. Ormond Beach is doing it. The people are coming. We have private businesses who are hosting events in February as well as March. And to have all these other people doing it, and then the merchants on Main Street who actually initiated, and Midtown, actually initiated, and Midtown, who are the core, the core historic area of this event, not participate, is painful to watch. I never thought that I'd be saying this from a, mm, emotional space, but I sat there and had to listen to them, and I had to stay very calm and just listen to them, but it was hard. So, some of the facts, and facts don't really matter, people matter more. I think the people's stories are more, the people's stories are what move you, the facts are just numbers, okay? But some of the numbers are that, you know, the, the 80th anniversary is coming, this is going to be, it's gonna be historic. We didn't have February, we didn't have October, and to not have this event is three in a row. In business, what you need is stability, and what you need are loyal followers to come back. There will not be a fourth opportunity for them. At that moment, people will have made other choices and other plans and developed other habits, and they won't come back. So, the other thing is that we've already had the Turkey Rod Run, we approved that, I recognize it's private property, I recognize that some other private industries can do what they want to do because they have the space. I understand that, and I support them in that. But those people are gonna come to one event, and they're gonna migrate down to Main Street. And the least that we can do is if they are coming, let's support them. They have a plan, do they have a plan for 2021, a safety plan?
That was what I was originally asking, I just wanted to see what they want to do, and can it be safely done?
Commissioner, they have their normal plan of submission in terms of what they do on their own property. It doesn't speak to operation on the street, they hadn't made any particular request, they may wish to do so. That's not ordinarily what's a part of the submission that they have made. They've made their individual submissions with waiting for the commission's direction as to what to do.
So, as I recall, and just bear with me for a second, and then I'll talk to you why it's important that, I'm glad Commissioner Delgado brought this up. Last time, there was a plan where it was a one-way route that went down Main Street in one direction, and then it came up auditorium, is that correct?
There was discussion about a plan, something like that, there were concerns, I know from the police department, as to what happened with the routing and how it would have impacts on the streets. And I think, I think also there was comments, and I can't recall from who, in respect to, would it be any better than if you just let it operate as it normally does?
Okay.
So, there's different choices, and I'm not here to try and tender an opinion as to one or the other. Those were things that were discussed.
Okay, so, I'm gonna read something to you that we quoted, okay, about our police team. And what we said in this particular manager's update is that we have one of the best police departments, that they have effectively been able to coordinate large-scale events because they have amazing experience, and they were able to turn around the vaccine event in two days with no notice. They were able to make that a success and help the people who are coming to us. So, do I believe that we are trained, well-trained, more than any other city to manage events? Yes, I do. So, that's, that's my first, I just want to throw that out there, that I think that they can do it.
If I, if I may, I have no doubt whatsoever that the police department can respond to the needs the commission gives to it, and the fact that you're asking the question now gives them an opportunity to consider what their answers may be two weeks from now. So, in respect to working with the police department, I've enjoyed a great relationship with them, I have great confidence in what they do, and I know you do as a commission, so from the perspective of, if you need that, I'm, I'll work with the manager to accomplish-
And then, finally, I just want to say one more thing. You know, when, when, as a business person, it's not just my business, when I'm doing something, it's, it impacts the, the person who's supplying me whatever they need to do. And I'll tell you what, what got to me the most. What got to me the most was when someone said, "Even if it's a no, just tell us." But not telling us impacts us, impacts our employees, impacts our supply chain, impacts the other people who have to make plans to come here. It's not just us, it's not just Main Street, it's not just Daytona, it's impacting an entire, it's an entire community, it's a cluster economy of so many different people. This one event impacts hundreds and hundreds of people, and I had no idea the extent to which, even the simple thing as the marketing for this. Us marketing the event produces extra income for the city, and that's a graphic designer working in somebody's office, that's a T-shirt maker. It's not just the people who have, you know, the bars. So, from that position, I recognize that it's two weeks. You know, is there any way, and I'm not sure the commission wants to entertain this, that we could actually just come to a decision and say, "We want this to move forward, and we will try to figure a way to make it happen," because they need an answer. They, they just need to know, waiting and waiting and waiting, that's not going to work. It's just not because they're, they're losing the, the confidence, it's the business confidence that they're losing. It goes out on social media, people are making other plans right now, and they're trying to figure out where they're gonna spend their money. They're making room reservations, they're booking. So, my question is, can we make a decision quicker and then have the city work toward creating the plan? But I would like, as Commissioner Delgado was alluding to, I'd like for us to try to come to a decision as opposed to just pushing it back. Is there any way that we can do that, that we could actually discuss it openly so that they know something?
I'd like to know, um, how did things go during Biketoberfest when the other cities around us conducted something and, and we chose not to? Yes, we, we may have done the, the street thing just because we knew they would still come, and those that had private property could still do whatever they could do. But I'd like to know, do we have any results from what happened with that?
I actually happen to know that the information I have says that Biketoberfest attendance was off by as much as 50%. So, the numbers were already low to begin, I mean, the people did not come to that. So, the numbers were already down in the other cities. So, the prediction right now is that, they suspect we'll be down by about 40% from what it normally is, but they're just happy to, to at least keep their traction, they just want to make something. I don't just mean financially, they're looking at a year from now, if they lose traction and lose customer loyalty, it's done.
And then I want to make sure also, the, um, whomever that was that did not cease and desist, based once we did that order, should not be participating in any regard if we do move forward.
I don't believe they are, I, I'm unsure, but I think they can-
There was no submission from that.
No, no.
If we were to consider this, I think we should have some, some kind of restraints in regards to, to numbers. I mean, that's the greatest concern. Um, I don't know what we can tell people on their private property, but, um, you know, I don't know, you just, ooh, this is, this is a tough one.
To me, to me, that's, and that's what I was kind of saying, it would depend on what the proposal is on a per-case basis to say, can, can what they ask for be done safely? And I'm not an expert in that, I mean, we have people who are, can look at it and say, "Okay, ABC Business wants to do this, eh, I don't think we can do that." Um, it's, "We have concerns about this." "Oh, they want to do this?" "Yes, that we think we can do," or "That can be done with a default," or "And this or, or that," and, and maybe it should be, and maybe the business can propose that as part, I don't know if typically they would do that, to say, "Here's how we're gonna save, you know, here's our, our proposed safety plan to do what we want." I, I don't, that would not be something historically they had done, but is that-
Can I-
That was my, that was my thought, was that I would like to know on a case-by-case basis, you know, do we feel like this is safe, or can it be done safely?
I want to look to my right and slightly down for consideration of that question. I think to fairly apply those standards person to person would be a very hard thing for you to do.
Can I, can I interject?
Sorry?
Maybe help, can I interject, maybe help?
Yeah, go ahead.
This was a long conversation, it was, we were very thorough, I listened to them very, very clearly, right? So, you know, what are they willing to do? They're willing to, and they believe in the concept, as do we, of taking things outdoors. All of our events have been outdoor events, right? So, um, they were commenting the fact the CDC recommended, you know, eating activities outside, anything they do outside. They want to be, they want to have their permitting for the outside areas, they have outside bars, which they did not use, that is what the permitting is in fact for.
Those are all a part of the plan, those are all illustrated in the documentation that you have. I will say that the commission ordinarily looks at them en masse, with the exceptions to non-compliance being the things that ordinarily get attention. It's certainly a different world than the years past, and I acknowledge that, that we do have that material, it is being formulated for your next agenda, and I'm certain the merchants will be in attendance to speak to you in respect to various questions. As it relates to what we said as staff, staff recognizes it's a commission decision to make, and we advise the people that we met with of that fact, they're aware of that, and however they may wish to present their position, they can. They did make their submissions on time, and we processed everything just like we always would. In the meeting, it was cordial, I understand what you're saying, and I've heard similar comments from some people.
Is there any way that we could get a response in a, in a, just in a more hasty fashion versus two weeks? Two weeks in business time, it's like a dog's life, right? It's a long time. In business time, when you're trying to plan, coordinate, and do certain things, and be ready, you know, that's a long time.
Staff recommendations are complete, it's awaiting commission action.
Which is still on the timeline.
Ma'am?
It's still on the regular timeline, right?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner May, I have had a lot of phone calls, quite a lot of phone calls from merchants too, and this impacts our bartenders, our waiters, our entertainers. I mean, they count on this money every year, and believe me, in the early eighties, I was a bartender, I bought my first house, working one week, Bike Week. So, they make quite a bit of money. And I think, and the bars are open, the governor has all the bars open, they are safer outside than cooped up in a bar with loud music, talking, so.
I agree, I, I don't know what the actual solution is, but I know that, um, stopping people from earning a living and, um, the government not kicking in and helping as much as they should if they're going to stop people from earning a living, it's, it's cruel. To me, it's, it's just cruel to not allow people to get out there and be able to work and make a living, and then not help them financially at the same time. So, um, I, I, I think that we, we left March, we pulled permits early, and then Biketoberfest, we did not, Biketober, yeah, Biketoberfest, we didn't do, and so we're coming back around, and I think we're gonna have to do something. I think something has to be on the table.
I mean, my, my, I have, you know, several thoughts, and one is a very, probably unpopular thought, but part of the reality is that, um, sometimes we talk about one of the problems being over-reliance on special events, and that we don't have a comprehensive year-round sustainable economy in these areas. I mean, there are businesses like Hollywood movie studios that have been billion-dollar industries for 100 years who are being completely redone, music industry got completely redone, you know, it's an unprecedented time, and we're seeing accelerations of business changes like nothing before. So, you know, part of me says, you know, it may be time, again, for, for businesses to rethink about, you know, is a reliance on, you know, isolated events the sustainable business model of the future? I mean, I think that's a conversation a lot of business owners are having, what does it look like? Are we gonna be, do we still need physical location? I mean, I think this is, this whole pandemic has prompted a lot of business evolution, and it's gonna be very uncomfortable, and there's gonna be a lot of, unfortunately, damage and casualties, and hopefully, we can stem those losses where we can. But again, this is a discussion we've had as a commission before too, is, you know, should we have Main Street and have a year-long business model that isn't as dependent on these, these isolated events? So, you know, I, I think that's part of the discussion too, and I think there may be business owners who are coming to that realization on their own, that, you know, as things have changed, they may be kind of rethinking what their highest and best use is for the property. So, I mean, I, I think we still have time to address this at the next commission meeting, I just wanted to make sure that we were on the schedule for, to have that discussion.
They are, if, if I may, I, I did touch base with Chief Young, and in respect to a, a plan, if they, the department needs time to consider what it might present to the commission, so they couldn't do that instantly, they can do it, and also, Captain Lee advised me that during Biketoberfest, the things that did occur, permitted or not in terms of the activities, people followed the safety protocols, and it really operated without difficulty from the police department's point of view on the street during that time period. I just checked with those gentlemen for that as you were going through with this discussion.
And that's probably because we didn't have an official Biketoberfest, so those companies complied.
And the anecdotal comments about the numbers of people, I think Commissioner May's comments were consistent with what I heard anecdotally, and I think you also have to recall that Daytona Beach really has been the core of it, Main Street has been the core, and the Daytona Beach, Main Street operation is different than, say, whatever they do at the Harley Shop, but the Harley Shop is a contained place, which was quite crowded from what I heard during that time. The stuff in Ormond is basically strung along US1 business to business, it's not the same sort of thing. And I, what I have to imagine is the merchants that are involved would appreciate the opportunity to speak before you, and I'm, their calendars will show, next meeting will be when this item comes up.
Have you received anything from, from SAMA? I know Commissioner May has indicated that.
Yes, ma'am, we had, I'd have to go back and look particularly at what, I'm sure SAMA did, and you've got a couple of independent merchants that did. The protocols were the same as they've been year to year. It's slightly different work as far as standards are concerned, and we're actually working on revising, but people are aware of that, but in terms of what we're doing administratively, it's pretty much steady as she goes.
My concern, again, would be, and these are my final thoughts on this subject, is, is maybe limiting how many vendors even come, because it's, I mean, when the word came down that we were going to cease and desist, I mean, I was telling some merchants, and I wish somebody would have hit me, but, um, you know, it, it was just like sardines and pumpkin beans, everybody's like right up on top of each other, so I, I need to see something where they're saying that they're going to have some kind of separation, some kind of, you know, spreading stuff out more, maybe they take it to more streets than where it is, or it goes out further than what they've limited themselves to, so that even the vendors are on top of each other, and the people are more spread out. Maybe in that area, they even use Daisy Stock and Park instead of just the street, because you've got bikes that are like bumper to bumper, and people are just standing around, watching their bikes and watching each other, it's just, it's just, ooh, it's too much.
I'm, I'm gonna say, some things you can do and some things you can't.
I don't think you can do that.
And from the perspective of spreading it further, the whole concept has been set for limited areas that are kind of geared towards activity, and the people expect things to be there.
I understand, that's been the previous concept, but we're in COVID years now.
Yes, ma'am, I know, but you'd actually have, it would be a significant policy change from the commission to impact areas ordinarily not impacted, is my point.
So, I agree with Commissioner Delgado, you know, in that people have had a year, and we all know how I feel about, you, you've seen my reaction to various things as it relates to COVID, right? So, people have had a year, a year to train themselves in decision-making. They have had a year to decide whether or not they want to enter into social situations, whether they want to stay at home. They've had a year to figure it out. It's coming up on a year, it is a year right now. And there comes a moment when people are gonna make their own decisions, you can only teach somebody for so long before they make a choice. And it's, it's, um, yeah, but before people make a choice, that's really all I can say. And I, I spoke with the merchants, and we know that Ms. Norma Bland passed away at the height of COVID, and we know the impact that had on our decision-making process. It was a very raw moment for us, and it still is in the community. So, when I turned to those merchants and I say, "Do you want this?", and they say, I literally said, "What do you want to do? What do you want to do?" And last time, they said, "Nothing, we don't want to do anything." And this time, they said, "We need to do something." So.
Well, I understand that, and I don't think that tonight we're gonna be convinced to make a decision, but what I think we are obviously all convinced of is the reality that, um, we have to exhibit compassion and do things in a timeframe that enables them to make a decision, to know. I agree with that, and I had, over Christmas break, been thinking a lot about this event, and recognizing that it was time to make a decision, you know, because, um, you know, the most difficult thing that I have ever done as mayor was to pull those permits on the last day and a half. I didn't take lightly that you're causing someone to have to lose their livelihood that, you know, a lot of them depend on for the year. So, I think that what we need to do is come back, you know, with, you know, a plan, and then make a decision. I don't think, you know, while I understand Commissioner Reed's sentiment, the nature of the event can't conceivably change that much, because no matter, if you set those rules in place, the merchants won't be able to control that. The people will dictate, you know, how that goes, and then we will look at the merchant and be, say, "You didn't do this," or "You didn't do that," and really, it won't be them, it's that people are used to an event in a certain way, and if they come here, they're gonna, if it's open, they're gonna engage with the event in the way that they're accustomed to. And so, I, I want to make a decision, and I certainly want to respect these businesses, um, and, and so, but we can't make that decision tonight. Mr. Manager, you have something?
You know, the, um, this is probably the toughest kind of decision to make during these times, because it's economic to businesses, it's financial to individuals, and it's livelihood to, for some of these folks, you know, being able to pay their rent and, and survive. So, you know, you got that side of the picture, and then you got the other side, is the health side, oh, gee whiz, um, we certainly don't want to create, create a situation where we're, um, taking an action that would be adverse to the health of the community at the same time. I mean, that's, yes, it's a heavy thing to weigh both ways. There is a thought that I think most people have, and that is, you know, we have to look out for our own health, our own, it's a personal decision in most cases. And those who choose to make the decision to be risky, they take a risk with health. And those who are basically, don't have a, a, a decision to make because financially they need to work, whether it's, it's risky for them or not, um, and I hate to see us in that, that posture. I think what the best we can do is to take a look at the, the public areas that are impacted, and see if there are things we can do that would encourage some compliance and distancing and those kind of things. I would think it's gonna be difficult, but we can certainly take a shot at that, and we'll, we'll come back with some ideas. But like you, I don't think any of us can make a decision tonight.
Yeah, and I, and I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that, you know, we can't control people's behavior, but we're in a far worse place today than we were last year.
Yep.
I mean, yeah, it's just the reality, we're in a far, far worse place, and at the time that this event transpires, we'll probably be, you know, just as bad or worse than we are now. And we're worse than we were in October.
Yeah.
And so, you, you know, and we were, we were adamant. So you cannot, all of a sudden, you know, while we, you, you have to be compassionate, but you have to realize that there was a purpose that you made the decisions that you made before. It wasn't just because, you know, you, it was just cavalier mentality. It was a mentality today, over 3,500 people in this country. That's nine, that's more than 9/11.
Yeah.
Just gone.
You know.
And then we say that, you know, it, it is a personal decision. Some of it's a personal decision, but some of it is also that we, we, just as a society, haven't done the things that we needed to do to look out for each other, to look out for one another, so that, you know, so that we could be open in a fair way. You know, we just not behaving in ways that we know would help us. But at any rate, it won't be decided tonight, but I do agree with the manager, and if you guys would bring us something, I, I'm going to make, I'm, I'm prepared to make a decision, and we'll be prepared, and we'll study this and talk with folks.
Just a final word, just from our position, the health, safety, and welfare of the public is a real concern that we all should be concerned with. And the, the fact that this pandemic is not going to be over next week or next month, it's not going to be over probably for, you know, a year or more, because it mutates and does other things. But I think the condition the city will be in, health-wise, largely will be improved over the next nine to 12 months because of the vaccinations. But we've gone through a period, you know, a year of terrible activities, it's, it's, we all have lost friends, neighbors, family to this disease, and I would hate to think that we are going to take a step that is contrary to what we've already tried to achieve.
Any other comments?
Sure. I just wanted to talk about two other things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the, we talked about Seabreeze last time, and I'd asked about getting some quotes or some estimates for the, replacing the signage or whatever. I forget the next, the exact term that we came up with for it, but just kind of the, what's happening in the area. And I don't know if, I didn't see anything in my email, so I don't know if maybe it's in my inbox, but I don't know where we are in getting.
I have something for you.
Okay, great, fantastic. And, you know, and I know, I think Captain Lee is here as well, but we, you know, we had talked before about doing some of the things on Seabreeze and kind of looking into that, and I got some feedback from some of the neighbors, so I guess I'll talk with you about where, where we have, what data you have, and maybe, I don't know if the next week is going to be a long meeting, but maybe I'd like to get on the, get that on the agenda in the next month or two, get with the police department and code enforcement, and kind of come back and talk with you about some other things that can be done and maybe need to be done, and some things that we can kind of do to make that part of the street a little bit, part of the town a little bit more, a little bit more vibrant. And then I did get the email that I asked for some of the data from Mr. Sexton. I don't know if there's any more data coming my way. I think he's here.
He's not here.
Okay, well, I'll get with him about that. But that's really all I have to say tonight. We spent a lot of time talking about the Bike Week thing. I'm mindful of that. So that's my, concludes my comments for this evening. Thank you.
If I could jump on the back of his comments, I, too, would like to see, in Sexton's 10A and 10B, he indicated that he had some, he had spoken with the actuary. I'd like to see that report. Is that some of the data you're talking about? Yeah, I'd, I'd like to see that as well, and I think you've asked for it a couple of times, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's, let's get that. I'm glad we pulled that.
I'd like to know what sardines and peanuts are.
The actuary report, how he came up with the conclusion on the 10 of, what is it, 401A?
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, it's the 401A for him. I'd like to know that, he said that this was based on the actuary of the, of the peoples.
Yeah, I just want to see the raw.
Yeah, from the, the board, their, their actuary yesterday.
That he didn't just make this up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd just like to see, that's exactly what I wanted to. I don't know if it, I just may not have gotten it. I don't know. That's why I was asking.
Okay. Commissioner May?
The Biketoberfest thing, the Bike Week thing to me was actually, I had some other points, but that, to me, is the most pressing thing for me, based on all the conversations I had this week with different people in different spheres of Daytona Beach, in different communities, residents especially. To me, that is the most important thing, and all I can say is that a lot depends on it. It's a very important decision, and my only concern is that the longer we wait, the harder it is. I recognize you can't make a decision tonight, but I wish there was a way that we could at least softly say to the merchants, you know, "You can start to make some sort of arrangements", because, again, we're into the first week. Generally, at this time, we would have made a decision already. Tonight would have been the night. Is that right? That we made the decision? And that time factor, that window, does make a difference.
Tonight would have been the night?
Yeah. That would have, yeah.
I just asked him that, and he said, "We run schedule. We're on a regular schedule."
Next week, we've, we've met with them, and we did everything pursuant to a schedule that we had long established. That's how they filed their applications on time and did the various things. I think in years past, we have done it at this meeting versus the second meeting in January, but that's my recollection. I don't, and, but in terms of this year, we're doing just what we said we were going to do on the time we said we would do it. And everybody, merchants included, is aware of that.
What's the date for Bike Week?
Oh, it's, third week, I think. It's third week.
In March, okay.
Third week in March, okay. Thank you.
So, no, that's, thank you so much for taking the time to share your time with me, Commissioner Delgado. That, that was what was pressing on my mind this evening, so thank you.
That's all right.
Mr. Mayor, can I say two more things? I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am, you may.
Um, you know, we all got that email from Mr. Slaven, or Slaven Group or whatever. At some point, I'm sure he has a schedule on when we all need to get together and talk about our expectations and what have you. You know, our manager's going to be leaving us soon, so we need to also have a discussion on, on an interim, and once he leaves us. I'm not rushing him, I'm just thinking, we need to be ready.
Oh, boy. I don't know if you all have noticed, but LPGA is exploding. And I don't know if you've noticed by virtue of your, what you have approved. And the map that was given, I really would ask you all to take a serious look at it. And I would also ask that we plan and prepare to have a workshop on that area, just that area alone. It's, I, I wouldn't describe it as some, some people describe it as being out of control. It's not out of control, because I think we, we knew this was coming, as I often say, 25 years ago even, we kind of knew it. And the fact that the bridge is, you know, likely to have some, to be something that will be agended and, and resolved is important. But I think it's important for us, as the policymakers, to take a serious look at the overall region and decide if the course of action that we're on is what we want to be, is where we want to be, and how much further we want to go. And, and if, you know, if it's going to be something that is palatable and in good stead for the people who live out there and the people who are moving out there. Buc-E's is going to be a tremendous challenge in some ways because of the volume of people that they probably will bring. And when you look at the volume of people that are moving out there, we're getting residential, and we're getting a lot of commercial, which is, you know, a good balance, but the, the commercial is being driven because of the residential, the amount of people that are out there, so we know that it's being driven. But I just want to make sure that we don't overdo it, and that our infrastructure can handle it, and, and so we need to look at it and decide, and, and have, you know, a map, and show how many people are going to be here, and we've kind of got that, but we need to look at it in a real, organized, and methodical way, and begin, then, then come up with some decisions to say, not, not that we want a thwart development, but you know, there's always a question as to which one, you know, do, do they pay for themselves? I've always said, commercial, certainly, residential, you know, you know, jury sometimes can be out, but they follow each other. So I'm, I'm going to say that I would like in the, in this quarter, or at the end of this quarter, for us and for staff to begin putting together a serious workshop that enables us to talk about, you know, what we want to do out there, and if we're growing up in the way that we want to grow up. We don't want to grow up in one day and wake up and say, "Oh, what did we become?". You know, we want to make sure that we became what we planned to become. And most, most of what I'm seeing, I did plan to become, but, you know, I'm seeing so many apartment complexes, 300, 400, 200. Okay, I want to make sure that, you know, is this who we want to be when we grow up as a city? And we are going to grow up. You know, we're going to grow up, we're going to continue to evolve, but there are other ways, and as we know, other areas to focus on. So I would like that. Very happy that we had a discussion on Bike Week. Was, was on my agenda, as I said, I discussed it over the break with myself in my, as I ruminated over the city. Okay, I also want to share with you all, you know, when you're an elected person, you know, the one thing that I have learned is that you are a catalyst. Sometimes you are a catalyst for, you know, things that inspire people and encourage people, but most often, we are in the middle of, you know, polarizing objectives and agendas. And the decisions that we make, even as it relates to Bike Week, is not going to make, going to make some of those folks that we talk to happy, but trust me, you, you got a whole lot of folks who are going to say no, because they don't have all of the information or they have just a different objective. And so what I have experienced, and I think that, you know, as a commission and as a mayor, it's been my objective to perpetually lead from the front as it relates to this virus. And so I've, I don't believe as a leader that you can, you should ever be afraid to lead. If you're going to lead, you have to have courage. I think it's the greatest virtue that human beings can exhibit. And so with that being said, I just want to remind folks of, you know, you know, why I was, you know, at my age, you know, got vaccinated, what some people would describe as early. From my perspective, you know, who gets vaccinated is, you know, it's an arbitrary decision, for the most part, that was established by the governor. I didn't have a problem, and I, you know, agree with, you know, most of, you know, how that was done. But I want to make sure that everyone understands that over two months ago, I had a decision, a conversation with Dr. Durham, and, and pointedly stated that, yes, I would be among the first people to get the vaccination, as a source of encouragement and setting an example. That was the sole purpose of it at the time, is that, within the next month, I began to think about it, and, you know, we knew that this vaccination is going to, it's, it's going to be a process, and that's what we have to understand. We should realize that it's, it's not going to solve all of our issues. And while we had long lines the other night, we have to remember that it's likely in about two months that we're not going to be able to give it out. When we are not going to be at 75%, we're going to want and be trying to get people to get it. And so, and when we get to that point, how are we going to get them and inspire them to get it so that we can successfully get through this? Because herd immunity is, is the way. At the end of the day, if we don't achieve that, and if not enough people get vaccinated, you know, I work at a school, and we're constantly short-staffed. Why are we constantly short-staffed? Because people are constantly contracting the virus. And we see it here. We're missing staff tonight who our prayers are with, because they are, they contract the virus, and then we have to shut things down. This is not a normal virus. It's highly contagious. And so my role was, in getting vaccinated, was to lead by example. Wouldn't ask folks to do something that I wouldn't do or wouldn't encourage my own family to do. And to that end, as a part of this, over the last two months, I, I came up with an idea of, I want us to be prepared to have a comprehensive education plan. And so with that said, I have, went out and secured $25,000 from the community leaders to help with a comprehensive educational plan that would, at the end of the day, my objective is, one, to inspire people to get the vaccine, to educate them about why it's beneficial, to provide scientific facts about it. You know, we cannot lose sight of the fact that Daytona Beach is a city that, you know, has a large swath of people, for whatever reason, for a variety of reasons, who are not as confident in our government and our traditions as others might be. So I want this, it will be a, you know, a campaign that's to inform, to inspire, we want to use billboards, want to use some commercial, commercials, PSAs, T-shirts, because at the end of the day, you know, as I was out the other day at the event at the stadium, I was there both nights, both mornings, spent half of the second night there, you know, with my own parents who were, who spent the night. But what I, what I saw in the lines really didn't reflect the demographics of Daytona And that's just the reality of it. And so a large part of the reason that I, I've done this and that I have, you know, I've reached out to private donors to raise this money was because I know that it's not going to be easy for us to encourage our residents to get this when that time comes. And so I, I'm working with, you know, federal, state, local partners to ensure that everyone who wants this vaccine will have access to it, to ensure that marginalized communities are not left behind. And I'm looking forward to seeing the early statistics of the demographics, so that we'll know that this is something that we all need to be, we've, we've been aggressive as a commission as it relates to COVID. You know, we were the first to cancel events, you know, but we were also the first and only to give rebates on water bills. We were the first to, to give, to support residents with, with rental assistance, you know, and we were the first to do testing. Then we were the first to support the vaccine rollout. But I want us to sustain that effort throughout the vaccine process. And so I will be working with Susan and her department, Sabone that is, and reaching out to other stakeholders in our community. I've already started talking. I've already started talking to young people because we're going to need young people who are 25 and 30 years old to step up and say, I'm getting the vaccine. Will you join us? You know, I've already reached out to other members of our community. And so I'm going to ask that members of this commission begin to encourage and prepare everyone that we know to start thinking about it. Because we want out of the COVID crisis. But getting out, it's not an easy process. We have to do what it takes to get out. And in the meantime, we have to continue to do the things that we've said before. We have to continue to wash these hands, stay masked up, you know, back up as much as we And inspire folks as the vaccine continues to become available. And just like we got better with testing, we're getting better with vaccines. And Halifax gave out a couple thousand vials in the last day or two. So when you start looking at it, we gave out, you know, 2,000 at the stadium. I'm not sure how many events been given out, but they'll give out 2,000 on the west side of the lane, the west side of the city in the next couple of days. Halifax will be giving out another couple thousand in a couple of days from now. So, and we will get better and better at this, but we have to be prepared and encouraged to do it. And I conclude my remarks by saying this. As mayor of this city, when I first ran for mayor, I knocked on probably 10,000 doors. I've always been a person that believes in being in people's face and being out front. When we were going through hurricanes, I would knock on 500 doors to get people, we thought they were, we thought we were going to have the worst hurricane. I knocked on doors to try to get people to leave. Went on the barrier island, went down on Gene Street to the most vulnerable people to try to get them to get out of here. During the COVID crisis, I called probably 4,000 senior citizens every night for two months, three months. I called 25 to 30 people, seniors, 65 and over, just to see how they were doing. And I don't intend to be any different as it relates to the vaccine. And so, and I'm encouraging us as a city, and I want to say that one of our officers the other night did an amazing job. I greeted 500 people out there at the line the other day. I was there just greeting the folks as they were going in. One couple in particular expressed great appreciation for the female officer who was at the entrance gate for helping make certain that their 90-year-old mother was secure and, you know, and comfortable in arriving because she was brought in, you know, later before the gate closed, but she didn't spend the whole night. Remember, the gates closed at 6:45 that morning. But they thanked that officer, and I don't know what her name was, but if you could find out, please express. And that was all that I heard in the line on Tuesday. And I want to express my appreciation to the manager and the staff because the difference between day one and day two was night and day. It was a, you know, I know it didn't feel right to some people, but it was, it was an outstanding decision to decide to open the gate and allow the people in off the road because it created, number one, a safer environment, most important. Number two, once the people were in that, inside the gate, we were able to, to count and we knew, you know, right away, we were able to close the gate so it didn't cause the backup that it did the night before. The road was backed up that first morning, all the way out to the highway from LPGA to ISB at the highway, which was encouraging because the reality is that people said, I want the vaccine. But that's the energy that we want to try to keep running throughout the community. And so I wanted to share that with you. We will begin doing the things that we need to do to get this campaign rolled out right away. But at any rate, those are my sentiments and those are my remarks.
Can I just comment on the whole stadium thing? You know, it was interesting when I reflect on it that if you had a car and you were a senior, you had access to the vaccine, if you had a car. Votran was not running buses for people who couldn't afford it. We have people who are older who work on beachside, white, black, Hispanic, Russian. We have people in Housing Authority who don't have cars. And that one little thing is what separated a senior from getting the vaccine or not getting the vaccine. That's the first thing. The second thing was the concept of the computers. How many school kids have we spoken about in Housing Authority who did not even have an iPad, a laptop to do their schoolwork? How many more adults wouldn't have had access to that? And so for this whole week, I've been listening to people say Daytona Beach, and I'm thinking, no, we didn't organize this. And I wish that somebody would come out and say, no, it wasn't us. Nobody likes to lay blame. There is no blame. This is just, this is the first time we've done this sort of thing. But, and I have another question. I just have to ask this question. Are we being reimbursed for the resources that our citizens spend taxes on when we had to do all this extra work? And because this was a statewide thing, right? Anybody could come and take the vaccine in Daytona Beach. Are we being compensated for our service workers, our evac, our medical staff, anything? Anything like that?
No.
I don't think we can ask to be compensated because we have to...
No, but the point is, we didn't have access to it. We were locked out of it. And I always come back to, I just sat there and I thought, wow, not having a car. You couldn't even ask a friend to take you there. And that represents 32114? That represents, not even that, it represents, we have so many people on Votran who work on beachside. They live here, it was in their backyard, and they couldn't do it. That to me was, that to me was the greatest sadness ever, the greatest sadness.
And that part won't change, the equity part. And that's part of, yes, sir.
I wanted to say, I was very surprised at the backlash. I kind of thought it was incumbent on people in the public eye to get the vaccine because so if you, there's millions of Americans who think it's not something that they should get. And I was, Elvis Presley, I guess, took the polio shot before he went on the Ed Sullivan Show and that helped get people to vaccinate, but apparently the reason people weren't vaccinated against polio is that people were scared of needles. I mean, it's the same fears for polio as they are now. People don't, people think they aren't going to get sick, people are scared of needles, all these things. And they're talking about trying to get, you know, Beyonce and The Rock and all these people to come out in support of vaccines and all that to get young people to turn out. So I think as a school principal, I think as someone who's in the community, you have, I think you had a moral obligation to let people know it's a safe, effective thing to do. I was absolutely shocked that people took that as to be like somehow you were, you know, doing something inappropriate. I would have done it and I was, I would still do it even though I didn't have any negative reaction to COVID because I think people need to see from people that they can trust that, yeah, this is not something that's going to, you know, it's not some government conspiracy, it's not going to kill you, that it's not going to harm you. And I think we all need to get out there, especially as you pointed out, younger people who are probably not going to want to be the first people to go out and get the vaccine even though they're the ones who are at high risk and are spreading it and super-spreaders and all that. So your students, their parents, all those people. So I think, I was shocked to see that what seemed like a benevolent action on your part was interpreted as being something malevolent because I've known you for a long time. I know that's not a bone in your body, thought that you deserved to be vaccinated when no one else did. I know 100% your motive was to show a very at-risk population. I mean, many of my clients think it's a scam, that the government's going to use it to track. I mean, I have heard all kinds of elaborate theories from, you know, 18, 19, 20-year-old people who think, where are you getting this from? They're getting it from Facebook, they're getting it from, you know, and they're not going to have firsthand experience with someone who took it. So if I said, hey, I got it, I'm still here, that might sway them. And so if you got, I guess, two doses were used on you and your wife, if you got three people to take the vaccine, it's a net ahead in my book. So I apologize, Mr. Mayor. I think it was, I disagree with the people who took, the exception with your actions. I think it was just the people that don't like you are always going to find things not to like about you. The people that like you are always going to support you. But I think you did the absolute right thing. I think you had a moral obligation to do it. I think all community leaders have an obligation to do it and, you know, show our support for it. So I thank you, Mr. Mayor, for doing that.
Appreciate that. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of things. I want to thank Drew Driscoll and Chief Young, both really, for stepping up right at the last moment to help us pull off moving everyone into safety into the stadium. And that took a lot of effort on the part. I know the police department, they'd worked all day and we probably pulled some in to work that evening because of that event. But in any event, we, I'm very appreciative of their efforts and their dedication to duty and helping the city solve something that could be a real issue for us in the overnight hours at that day. That, the only other thing I'd like to bring up is Bike Week is March the 5th through the 14th.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, so it's close down the road. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. I've had two weeks off and I feel relaxed and it's nice to be back in Daytona.
Oh, it's awesome.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? All right. Happy New Year, Daytona Beach. It's a great day to be a Daytona Beach resident and citizen. This meeting is adjourned. We'll take public comments.
Comment forum. Our first speaker is Frederick Brown and on deck is Randall Gray.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. My 150 seconds goes by very quickly, so my first item that I want to discuss is the rescinding of consent agenda item 8U from the meeting of May 20th, 2020. The grounds that you can rescind this on is that, number one, you are given incomplete and inaccurate facts. And number two, the land is deeded public access forever and is listed on the deeds of 193 homes in the Bridgeport Heights neighborhood. But it goes beyond that. It's deeded to the public, not just the people there. All those properties in Bridgeport Heights have this on each of their deeds. Most of these properties have title insurance. The actions of the city council is affecting the values of all these homes. But what's worse than this, okay, my third point is, over the years in Daytona Beach, for those of you who know how the city was originally laid out, all the roads on the beachside that went east and west ended at the river. The river access has slowly, one by one, been taken away. Some of it by necessary items such as stormwater drains and pump stations, but the rest of it through attrition and acquisition by wealthier people who could just take over the property. This has left this property in Bridgeport Heights as the, on Halifax, as the only property with river access all the way down to Daytona Beach shores. There is nothing else on B-side. The statement was made earlier this evening, why do people come to Daytona Beach? Well, this is one of the reasons I came. I was, I've been an avid canoe-er all my life. I had, I eventually sold my canoe because I didn't have any way to put it in at the That said, you are aware of the problem, you're aware of the solution, please do so. Number two, I'd like to bring up, I'm sorry, number three, that was number two. Number three is the future of Daytona Beach. And I know, Mayor, you spoke very well last meeting about some of the things that you see down the road. And I know today has been clouded quite a bit by the COVID and discussion of Bike Week, which is also extremely important. But what I'd like to see the city take is a, let's look beyond the near horizon as to where this city is going to be going. And Mr. Mayor, as you stated, the city that we want to, is going to be the city that we want it to become. I would like to see the mayor, and I'd be happy to join it, develop a task force called the Future of Daytona...
Thank you, sir. Your time has expired.
Sorry.
All right. Just finish the name. What's the name? The Future of Daytona what?
Yeah, the Future of Daytona. And I would like to see a committee on that. I would love to volunteer, be with it, some citizens, and primarily concentrate on the technology and long-range conceptual ideas for the city.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Our next speaker is Randall Gray and on deck is Lee Kizner.
Hello. My name is Randall Gray and I reside at 2301 South Halifax Drive in Daytona Beach. And I also am, I want to speak on the item 8U and from the May 20th meeting. This was a public access for me and many others. I live very close. There used to be a canoe launch sign there that said on Peninsula. They kept disappearing. It disappeared so often that they just, I don't know who was replacing it, but the replacement stopped. All the current and past owners of that, of the properties that are next door to it, you know, have been questioning everybody that went down there when it was public access. Many of the people in that neighborhood still live in the neighborhood that used that for years. Now their children have grown up to use it and now their grandchildren have grown up to use it. When this, when this transaction actually took place and was approved, it was in a council meeting, May 20th, which is, was in the heat of the pandemic. And, you know, we were all encouraged to stay at home. There was 10 o'clock curfews. And the biggest worry that we had was where we were going to get our necessities to live on. And, so with that being said, I mean, there's several people that are very upset and that have called public officials and not to get any answers and only passed on to the next. Yes, does it affect my property value? To me, it does. One of the things that hurts me the most is when my grandchildren come to stay with me, the first thing they ask me is, Papa, can I walk down? They call it the lake. And I said, sure, let's go to the lake. So this may seem to be small to some, but it's big to myself and to my grandchildren. It's huge.
Our next speaker is Lee Kizner and on deck is John Nicholson.
Hi, thanks for letting me speak. My name's Lee Kizner and I live at 2318 South Halifax Drive, right down the street from the property that was abandoned, right away vacated, whatever you want to call it. This was public property that my kids and I would walk down to the river every once in a while. I purchased kayaks to be able to take down there and go kayaking with my children. And the city has given this property away to the two landowners on each side. Well, this property in 1926, I believe, is when it was platted out. And apparently, it was supposed to be for a bridge in the application, but I don't think in 1926, they were planning on building a bridge there, which attests to the facts being inaccurate. And as far as vagrants walking through the yards, the property goes right between each landholder on each side, right to the river. And vagrants could be me and my kids, I guess, if we're walking down there, but it was public property at the time and we don't go down there anymore. I have a lot of information about it and I've contacted the city through online forum, through commissioners, phone calls, through the building code as it was through during the COVID. And I really didn't get much response. The last response I got back was that, we'll call you back, the legal department is looking at it. And I've not heard anything since then, and I think that it should be addressed and looked at and revisited. Thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson and on deck is Ann Ruby.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grammy Avenue. Mayor, you had mentioned looking at the beachside. 30 years ago, they had a program called Take Part Two, and all of those projects that they had wanted in Take Part Two have been built. The hotels on the beachside, the water park, the parking garage, the News Journal Center. And so they expanded the Ocean Center. And so they expanded the Ocean Center. That was Take Part Two. So I'm asking you to think of doing a Take Part Three, one for beachside, one for downtown, one for Midtown. I'm sure you read the article in Sunday's paper. So Midtown really needs it and also the area that you were speaking about, west of 95. Secondly, um, with regard to Bike Week, I think you all are not really looking at what Bike Week is. I walked Bike Week every morning for the last 30 years, 8 o'clock in the morning, 12, 5, and 11. That way you can see exactly what's happening. Those tents are empty. There's one or two people, at most three or four, in the tents. The problem that Paul is worried about is you're not addressing and cannot address. When you canceled Bike Week, that Saturday was bumper to bumper. Biketoberfest, no outdoors, but they were crammed passing the virus inside those little buildings. They should have been outside. I walked down New Year's. The Hilton had this great idea of fencing it off and having everybody stay in their rooms and separate it. But the boardwalk was bumper to bumper, half of which didn't have their masks on. Biketoberfest, you could look and see the crowds. What the tents do is spread people out. It really doesn't hurt by having the tents there. People are not crammed in those tents. People are crammed inside the bars. None of the vendors, none of the businesses get that kind of, they would love to have it, but they don't get it. So I'm asking you, think of it yourself. If you were going to lose your house, if they were going to foreclose on your house, how do you feel about it? What would you think of the person that's foreclosing on your house? You guys are foreclosing on these businesses. By what you're doing, you're taking the money that will not allow them. There are five businesses that have been closed, beefs up. And they've been there like 25, 30 years. So think about it very carefully, what you're doing to these people's lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our final speaker tonight is Ann Ruby.
Hi, Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. So, a map is nothing but a graphic display of data. And there have been a couple of really significant graphic displays of data. One was by Charles Joseph Menard in 1869 when he did probably the best graphic ever on Napoleon's march on Moscow. He shows how, it's so vivid in the graph, how he started with 400,000 men and ended up a few months later with 10,000. It's a powerful piece of documentation. In 1854, Jon Snow was able to use graphic displays of data to prove that cholera was spreading from the East End pump when, in London. When they took the handle off the pump, cholera stopped spreading. So the map that you have, that you've received, is good, but it's a first draft. It needs to be better. First of all, I went into the key and I pulled out um primary development project numbers and secondary development project numbers. There are two places where there's duplication of project numbers. So you have two dots when you should only have one. And there's another place where a primary is also identified as a secondary. So I think it needs a little work, a little cleaning up. And the ideal map would not have round dots because the round dot for Avalon Park is the exact same size as the round dot for Buc-E's. They are two significantly different projects. The round, I know they can do this because I've seen them do it on these displays when they have these rezoning issues. The map should be outlined by parcel and the intensity of the color should reflect the, or shading, should reflect the density of the project. And the advantage of this would be, A, you'd see it by parcel and you would also then also be able to identify which parcels are vacant. Because you don't have, I don't think, a lot of vacant land out there that's possible for development. And you could even divide your vacant land into a couple of different kinds. One that's feasible for development and one that will never be able to be developed because it's underwater, basically. Or whatever the issue is. So I think, and in an ideal world, then there would also
Go ahead.
Would be traffic lines that would show the expected impact to and from as based on the density of what's there. So I think that you could get a better graphic display that you could use. It would take a while to create, it wouldn't be fast. But I think it would be very meaningful, particularly if you just focused on what was on, you know, in the LPGA area that you're talking about. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, I hope you were listening to that because I agree with a lot of what she said and I do want it to get better. Okay. Is the other, is uh, is the attorney gone? Could, could you answer a question? These gentlemen keep talking about that property. Is that something that's not reversible? What, I, I'm going to go back and revisit that, but you know, just go back and look at it and then come back and tell me.
I don't, I don't know the details and I hate to rely on what's been said at the meetings. So let me look further into it and I'll report back to the commission.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Did you hit the gavel?
Oh. Good night.